The 12th meeting of the 23rd Council will please come to order. All council members are present this evening. Councillor Benton will be calling in telephonically as allowed under the council rules and procedures. At this time, we will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. But during the moment of silence, I'd like to remember the families and the victims of the Santa Fe High School shooting in Texas. And also, Councillor Borrego was saying that there was a couple of victims that lost their life today with the flooding in Arroyos here in Albuquerque. And Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President, and unfortunately, it is timely. I'm wearing my orange tie today because next week is National Gun Violence Victims Memorial Week on June 2nd Memorial Day, so we ask you to remember all the victims of gun violence in our moment of silence tonight.
And Councillor Davis will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All council members are present this evening. Councillor Benton will be calling in telephonically as allowed under the council rules and procedures. At this time, we will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. But during the moment of silence, I'd like to remember the families and the victims of the Santa Fe High School shooting in Texas. And also, Councillor Borrego was saying that there was a couple of victims that lost their life today with the flooding in Arroyos here in Albuquerque. And Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President, and unfortunately, it is timely. I'm wearing my orange tie today because next week is National Gun Violence Victims Memorial Week on June 2nd Memorial Day, so we ask you to remember all the victims of gun violence in our moment of silence tonight.
And Councillor Davis will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Councillor Davis. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the sign-up table. The council will take a dinner break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and as respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go much smoother if we are respectful of one another. We are now under Item 3, which is Proclamations and Presentations. The first proclamation will be read by Councillor Borrego, and that proclamation is Recognizing Teachers Appreciation Month. Councillor Borrego?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the public. I would ask some teachers that are present to come forward. Several individuals, Candy Patterson, who is on the Board of Education, I think she called and said that she was ill, Sarah Adelson, Ellen Bernstein, Jessica Martinez, Joy Garrett, Michelle Krista Radosovich, Cheryl Wise, would you all come forward, please? And any other teachers that would like to come forward?
Move to the center here, to the podium?
So last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and so we decided that we would present a proclamation to the teachers and enact Teacher Appreciation Month. Whereas Albuquerque teachers were entrusted with 84,200 children and youth's education in 2017-2018 school term, and endowed these students with knowledge and understanding to accomplish their strongest futures. And whereas Albuquerque's teachers are devoted to nourishing the physical, mental, emotional, social, and intellectual promise of each student by removing barriers to learning and embracing students' livability, individuality, and connection to their communities through department programs such as students', family, and community supports. And whereas Albuquerque Public Schools has 6,000-plus teachers continuously using their own resources to purchase supplies, work long hours and weekends, and reach above and beyond their positions responsibilities while receiving compensation falling short of that warranted by their dedication. And whereas in 2018, bilingual teachers guided Albuquerque students to earn over 580 bilingual endorsement seals in grades kindergarten through eighth grade. And whereas approximately 13,000 students attending Albuquerque Public Schools are served for learning disabilities and/or exceptional abilities through specific targeted teacher certifications and classroom experience designed to meet the requirements of special education students who otherwise may not receive the support they need to reach their full potential. And whereas thousands of students graduated from Albuquerque Public Schools in May of 2018, be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes Albuquerque Public Schools and teachers and proclaims the month of May, Albuquerque Teachers Month. So I don't know if anybody would like to say a few words? Or if there's someone that I failed to introduce?
I think you introduced everybody. I'm Joy Garrett. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Borrego, and thank you for all of the people here for supporting us educators and your kids. You don't have to be a teacher to volunteer in our schools. We love having you visit once a week to read and to help and to tutor, so we invite you into our public schools because your presence will just make them better. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Joy. Would you like to come forward to receive the proclamations? Sad, did you want to say a few words?
Just thank you for the recognition. Teachers are lacking a lot of respect these days, so we really, really appreciate you going forth and doing this. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you very much.
And Councillor Borrego, if there's any other teachers here in the room this evening, would you please stand and be recognized? You may come up and receive the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to come forward?
We have three more proclamations here this evening. The next proclamation will be Councillor Borrego and myself, and that is recognizing the Albuquerque Fire Department active and retired members. To accept the proclamation on behalf of the active members is Chief Paul Dow and Diego Arancón, and to accept the proclamation on behalf of the retirees is Sam Baca and Kerry Horton. I'd like to have all of you come to the front, please. Welcome. Councillor Borrego?
Okay, thank you. And this is on behalf of the city, Active and Retirees Proclamation. Whereas Albuquerque, a city of 189.5,000 square miles, is that thousand, I think? And 37,000 acres of open-spaced lands is in a severe drought, obligating firefighters be on their highest guard to protect the city from fire danger. Whereas in 2016, 67,490 critical situations warranted Albuquerque firefighters and Albuquerque paramedic units to perform rescue and emergency medical procedures to save lives of Albuquerque's children and citizens. And whereas the people of Albuquerque demonstrate their trust and reliance on Albuquerque firefighters, increasing calls for emergency assistance by 11% over the past several years. And whereas in '26, a coveted Class 1 Public Protection Classification was awarded by the Insurance Service Office ranking Albuquerque Fire Department amongst the nation's best.
And whereas the Retired Albuquerque Firefighters Association is a source of pride and comfort to families of deceased firefighters, providing funds for 133 families to meet the basic necessities and coordinating contributory ceremonies for firefighters and conveying the deceased in an honorary fire truck to their final resting place. And whereas the Retired Albuquerque Firefighters Association is exemplary diligent in their efforts to support the city firefighters, building wheelchair ramps for handicapped members, lobbying for medical benefits, and contributing $1,000 a year to the Random Acts of Kindness. And whereas the Albuquerque Firefighters and Retired Firefighters Association Act is there to support and dedicate and protect services to the community that they serve, be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes Albuquerque active firefighters and Albuquerque retired firefighters. And I want to thank all of you for your hard work and effort, and especially the retirees. I know Sam is not here this evening, but the two of you have made a tremendous difference and set the foundation for the firefighters that work for the Albuquerque Fire Department today. Chief, and then we'll ask the other two to speak.
I just wanted to say I really appreciate the retired firefighters. They paved the way for us, and they're still teaching us many lessons, so I really appreciate that. Also, just to update on that rain, which was wonderful to get, I'm sure everybody appreciated that, but it didn't come without some consequences. Unfortunately, we had four structured fires in about 30 minutes from lightning strikes, and we did have several people that were in the arroyo. Albuquerque Fire Department pulled five people out of the arroyo. We did lose one person, though.
Kerry?
On behalf of the Retired Firefighters Association, I want to thank you. And as a former active-duty firefighter, I do know that you have some issues concerning active-duty firefighters tonight, and your positive consideration of those issues would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arancón?
Council President, esteemed councillors, thank you very much for your support, as always. We appreciate working with you, and thank you, Councillor Borrego.
We'd like you to come up and accept your proclamation. and retired members. To accept the proclamation on behalf of the active members is Brian Rose, and to accept the proclamation on behalf of the retirees is Santos Baca, former chief of Bernalillo County, and Ronnie Martinez, if you'd like to come up.
And I think Brian Rose is also here, Mr. Chair, I believe.
Yeah, we did. Welcome to read that proclamation will be Councillor Borrego and Councillor Peña.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll go ahead and start off the proclamation. Hey, Ronnie. Whereas the county of Bernalillo encompassing 890 square miles surrounding the city of Albuquerque and serving to support and promote a population of 118,000 constituents is in a severe drought, obligating firefighters to be on their highest alert to guard the county from fire danger. U.S. Drought Monitor, New Mexico. And whereas in 2017, Bernalillo County Fire Department answered over 18,000 calls, increasing by 4% every year, and thereby validating the people of Bernalillo County's confidence and faith in the fire department to lend aid in critical situations. And whereas Bernalillo County fire stations and districts are all staffed at the advanced life support level, and every Bernalillo County firefighter and Bernalillo County paramedics achieves licensing in basic emergency medical training, while many accomplish intermediate and paramedic-level emergency medical training, conferring on them the ability to address county emergencies with full skill and confidence. And...
And whereas the Bernalillo County Retired Firefighters Association also tirelessly champions the respect due to Bernalillo County retired firefighters of Bernalillo County conducting honorary funeral services, partnering with Behind the Badge to provide counseling for traumatized service retirees, and purchasing wheelchairs and other necessities for former firefighters in times of need. And whereas the Bernalillo County Retired Firefighters Association generously upholds Albuquerque and surrounding communities, contributing $3,000 in 2017 to a variety of causes through their Albuquerque-area Random Acts of Kindness, charitable nonprofit organization, donating labor to build homes for Greater Habitat for Humanity program, and providing backpacks and coats for Albuquerque's underprivileged youth. And whereas the Bernalillo County Fire Department and Bernalillo County Retired Firefighters Association unfailingly watches over the welfare of the public they serve, gathering toys, food, money, and basic necessities for Bernalillo County, be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes Bernalillo County firefighters and Bernalillo County retired firefighters. Thank you all this evening. And we have some proclamations for you. So if you'd come forward, please.
Chief, would you like to say a few words?
Just like to thank the city council for your support and giving us this recognition, and we'll continue to try to serve the community in any level we can, as retirees, in our part to do the best we can. So thanks again.
I would just like to say thank you to the council for recognizing the men and women of the Bernalillo County Fire Department who risked their lives to safeguard the people and visitors of Bernalillo County and the city of Albuquerque. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez?
I'd like to thank you once again, each and every one of you, for recognizing the Bernalillo County Fire Department Retirees Association. It is a great privilege and an honor to receive this proclamation from you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to invite Mr. Harris, ZIE, from the Islamic Center of New Mexico to come join us at the podium along with some representatives from the Islamic Center. Mr. Harris, thank you so much for joining us. I know we have some other guests joining us, but if it's okay with you, I'll just get started, and we'll introduce everybody as we get to the end, if that's okay. So whereas Ramadan is the ninth month of the Islamic calendar and is observed by Muslims worldwide by focusing their minds on prayer and purity, spirituality, and charity while abstaining from food and water. And whereas the first day of Ramadan in 2018 was May 16th, and the last day will be celebrated on June 14th. And whereas Muslims celebrate nightly the breaking of fast, or iftar, with a family, friends, and their community by preparing large meals and donating to charity. And whereas the local Muslim community, which goes back four generations in New Mexico, and I suspect farther than that, contributes to the local economy by serving as business owners, attorneys, accountants, scientists, educators, doctors, nurses, engineers, pharmacists, and members of the armed forces. And whereas the Islamic Center of New Mexico provides religious, social, and educational services to Muslims in Albuquerque and to non-Muslims in our surrounding communities. And whereas the local Islamic community contributes to Albuquerque's leading industries and flagships institutions, serving on technical staff at Sandia National Labs, Kirtland Air Force Base, the Air Force Research Lab, as well as serving and teaching staff at the University of New Mexico, New Mexico State, CNM, and others. And whereas the members of our Islamic Center of New Mexico have a strong civic presence over the years, and individuals have served New Mexico on behalf of the state's Highway and Transportation Commission, the Public Defender Commission, the New Mexico Society of Professional Engineers, ACLU, and the New Mexico Faith Coalition for Immigrant Justice. And whereas the city of Albuquerque would like to thank the Islamic Center of New Mexico for all of their hard work and dedication to our Islamic community and the community as large, be it proclaimed by the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, that we hereby honor the contributions of our Islamic community and the values of peace and charity that they continue to promote in our city of Albuquerque. Thank you, and welcome. President ZIE, I want to welcome you and thank you, and thanks for bringing our honored guest, I see, Mr. Abbas Akil, the former president emeritus, I guess, at the Islamic Center. We want to welcome you because it's an important time for your community and our city, and a great opportunity, and I appreciate the opportunity that you've offered for us to come share an iftar and others at the center, and I hope to join you before we're done. But would you tell us just a little bit about what's happening in the Islamic Center, especially right now in the community, and then we'll ask you to come up and receive our proclamation?
Absolutely. President Sanchez, members of the council, Councillor Davis, we are truly honored to have you present this information about their community. As Brother Abbas reminded me, I think this is the first time in 40 years that there's been some recognition, so I truly hold all of you in high esteem for recognizing the Muslim community who's had many, many years of service here, and we love this city and we love this state. Surrounded behind me is a group of us from our community who maybe are standing now or maybe could stand up. So just the people in this room, we all share the fast, we're all fasting right now, as are over 1.5 billion Muslims across the planet. And it is a declaration of faith, it is a pillar of Islam, but it's not just about abstaining from food and abstaining from water the entire day. It's about service, it's about giving back, it's about appreciating what we have and appreciating what we don't have. And so all those variables are considerations that the month of Ramadan helps remind us as Muslims. And so in that, I will stop, and I will appreciate the comments from maybe a few others who would like to maybe say a few words.
Come join us. The next item is a presentation from Gerald Romero, the Budget Officer, regarding the latest GRT report. Mr. Romero?
Mr. President and members of the council, the city received its gross receipts tax distribution from the state on May 17th. This is March 2018 activity, business activity that we accrue for the month of April, so this is the 10th month. April grew significantly, we had 6.6% growth, which brought the cumulative growth for the year to 1.7, which is right where our city economists and others had forecasted it in the budget we submitted to you for fiscal year 19. So we're right on track with two months remaining. Significant strength was seen in construction. In fact, it buoyed most of this, I believe, month over month and cumulatively. But as you know, the construction cycle can be somewhat volatile. Retail picked up a bit, and we are seeing significant growth in healthcare and social assistance, which seems to be completely offset by the loss we're seeing in the medical hold harmless. So if you take the food and medical hold harmless out of this completely, we're still, we're seeing about 3.4% growth, but not for the phase-out of the hold harmless. We have a motion and a second for the approval of the letter of introduction. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. Council Vice President Harris?
I move approval of the letter of introduction.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the letter of introduction. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. Council Vice President Harris?
I move approval of the letter of introduction.
We have a motion and a second by Council Vice President Harris to accept the committee report. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. Council Vice President Harris?
I move approval of the letter of introduction.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the letter of introduction. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. We are now under deferrals and withdrawals. Councilors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? I have one from public hearings and this is item A, AC dash six. Dayan Hoekman of Oibal Mac and Cordova, agents for Larry Tucker, appeals the decision of the Environmental Planet Commission and Councilor Winner is recusing himself on this matter and I move deferral until the June 18th meeting. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the deferral until June 18th signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that carries unanimously. We are now on item nine, that is the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Council Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Council Penya?
No.
Okay, and before we vote on this consent agenda, agenda item for all the individuals on tonight's agenda that are on the consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on a board of commissioners, please stand and we'd like to thank you for your willingness to serve. Would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you and hold your breath for this vote, those that are wanting to serve. All those in favors of the consent agenda signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no, that passes unanimously. We are going to go to final actions before we go to general public comments. And the first item will be item D. That will be Council Jones and Penya, that's committee substitute R dash 24. That's, that is appropriating funds for operating the government of the city of Albuquerque for fiscal year 2019, beginning July 1st of 2018 and ending June 30th of 2019 and adjusting fiscal year 2018 appropriations and appropriating capital funds. And I will turn this over to the chairman of the committee of the whole. Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. First action is move, move, do approve as substituted?
We have a motion and a second. As substituted?
Yes, thank you. And now we'll start with some amendments.
Do you want to go to general public comment first?
If you'd like.
Now, let's go and go to the public. And we also have, if you've signed up under general public comment, but you wanted to speak on the budget, we will allow, we will allow some ample time for you to sign up. And the first speaker on this item, and we will call the first five names and once your name has been called, be prepared to come to the front, there are seating available for you to speak. First speaker will be Rudolph Serrano, followed by Tim Sheen, followed by Art Tenenbaum, followed by John Hedera, followed by Antonio Carrero. Welcome.
Councilor Sanchez is presenting.
Mr. Serrano, just one moment. Council Benton, can you hear us?
Counselor Benton?
Give us one moment, please. Counselor Benton will be calling in telephonically, but we are having some technical difficulties.
Counselor? Go ahead and continue.
Okay. Mr. Serrano, go and proceed. Thank you.
Good evening, Council Sanchez. Well, we're getting a new mayor, new ideas, new goals, new spirits coming into, into the city and, and we have all ones too. And they're going to be completing today. One of the things that I want to think about is family. We have Victoria Martin case, we have a little seven-year-old girl, we have a bunch of little cases of the family getting away from the public and the public getting away from, from our families. We need outdoors, we need those soccer fields for our people to have something else to do than having sex. Let me, let me tell you the story. I, I drive your daughters. You know, I drive them at 11-years-old to go to rapes, to get raped. I drive them to go and have sex with all the gang banging when they're 14-years-old. I drive them at 15 to go with all the bikers. And then they come back, you know, to do the high school and get married just to get divorced. We need to change the mentality of our city and go back to our values, go back to our churches, go back to our principles. And that's what our mayor is trying to do with this bill. And I know we cannot afford it that good, but there's, there's, if there is hope, there is future. So if we, if we, if we focus the whole thing and change the whole strategy, we change the whole energy to be a better city, then we can make somewhere else, we can get somewhere else. It takes a lot of effort, but it takes a lot of will and we have to detach to the old Albuquerque and jump into the new Albuquerque. So that's what I want you guys to, to support, outdoors. Let's get out of there because those, those children are isolated. They don't have a voice, they don't have a choice. And we can give them a voice and we can give them a choice and we can give them an outside where they can contact the good people that we have because nowhere all, not everybody's evil here. So that's, that's my point.
Thank you.
Go biking.
Your time has expired. Tim Sheen?
Good evening. Thank you, Council, Council President Sanchez and the council, councilors. I'm Tim Sheen, I'm the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club Central New Mexico and also the Chair of the New Mexico Out of School Time Alliance. And I'm speaking on behalf of out of school and, and summer programs. We need more and more support for that these days. We have a lot of things going on in this community and I won't reiterate what he just said, but there's a lot of prevention that we can do to these kids, to help these kids out that will help in the long run, that will help for the police later on and everything else. Education, I'm tired of our kids being ranked at the bottom of, of all kinds of things, child well-being. And I think with your support, and there's a lot of different avenues of that, that's been outlined in that million dollars, but I think we really need to focus on our kids because they're our future and that's what we're all about. So I just want to pass that along to everybody.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson?
Mr. Sheen, may I just ask you a question? Thank you, Mr. President. So first of all, I really appreciate everything that Boys and Girls Club does and you yourself and all of your staff, been over there several times and it's a great place, love it. And I know that, that you know what you're talking about because you, you're up to your elbows in, with, with kids every day. So, but one of the, one of the complaints about this particular budget is that there's been essentially no planning. Few meetings, you know, and people, you know, have shared goals certainly, but not really any planning for expansion of any real degree. So how do you see that working with the, the programs that the city might be able to expand for, for you?
Well, I think a combination of things. The city definitely through our, our recreation centers and those kind of things have the opportunity to expand in some programs, but partner with other organizations in town, even outsourcing. There's a lot of good out of school and, and summer programs out there that know what they're doing. We have proven results, we have outcome measurements and everything else that we could, we could work with the city hand in hand. So we've got a track record. And I think the city's got a track record of some things, we have a track record of some things. So I think working together is what it's all about, partnerships.
Well, but what I'm talking about is immediately. I mean, we could actually do all of this in mid-year, you know, and that would give time to, you know, to develop some strategies for, for, you know, where this money was going to go, what it was going to do, what other resources are needed, so.
I think part of it is also, I know part of it was for Community Schools Initiative, the CSI program, that all the schools right now that are, that are doing CSI and that are applying for this coming year have actually done surveys. They, they are completing surveys this week, the school's out this week, and they are actually finding out what is needed and that kind of stuff in their, in their local community, whether it be South Valley, International District, wherever. So the facts and figures are out there and I think that the resources are out there that we team them up together.
So do you see that as a, CSI as a, a potential recipient of some of this $900,000? That could be used right away, like this summer?
Yeah, it'd probably be used more for the school year because CSI is tied into schools, through ABC Community Schools. For the summer program, there's a lot of us doing summer programs out there that have wait lists. We go from six programs to two during the summer. Part of it is because we're in schools and the schools are closed, but we have a lot of, lot of need for kids out there and there's a lot of other organizations, whether it be NDI or lots of other organizations in this community that need support.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Counselor Bodego?
Mr. Chair, I wanted to recognize Mr. Sheen for the work that he does and the work that the group does as well. I just found out tonight that he's actually my neighbor and I didn't know that, so I'm really excited to have, to say hello to you this evening.
Thank you, Counselor. Next speaker, Art Tenenbaum?
Good evening, pernicious politicians. Don't fall out of your chair. I'm feeling a bit optimistic, a little bit more optimistic about the city. The mayor has demonstrated great leadership abilities during a very difficult time here in Albuquerque. Mayor Keller earned a master's in Business Administration degree from Harvard Business I believe the mayor knows what he's doing. There's an old saying, lead, follow, or get out of the way. I suggest that the city council, or the majority of it at least, follow, get behind the mayor, or get out of the way. So I guess the bone of contention here is a million dollars, which is a small fraction of a percent of the budget. The mayor talks about working collaboratively. The city councilors are all kind of bumbling around in their own directions. The mayor talks about building structure and he's doing it. He has assembled a very impressive administration with accomplished, experienced, professional people in its highest ranks. The mayor is building systems, building systemic improvement. I hope that you will see your way clear to fall in line, get behind the mayor, Tim Keller, the man whom two out of every three voters cast their ballots for last November to lead the city of Albuquerque into the future.
Next speaker is John Hedera.
Mr. Chairman and committee, how many of you are parents? Could you raise your hand, please, if you're a parent? How many of you are grandparents? Okay? I read in the paper that the committee doesn't want to support children. I've worked in, for children in community centers for the city of Albuquerque. I've worked for Albuquerque Public Schools, probably more than any of you have worked in any of your jobs. And I see a need for programs for children. We're going into the summer. How much more with our community centers and other help could we have for children? Children who will stay out of trouble, out of breaking into your neighbors' homes or your homes, or going to drugs, or out in the ditches? We need to support our children. And I cannot see how you, Ms. Jones, and your committee cannot care about students enough with all the taxes and the money that this city puts in. We need to put our children first and I see that you haven't. And I thank our mayor for wanting it.
Thank you. Next speaker is Antonio Granillo. Hopefully I pronounced that correctly.
Granillo, A-N Spanish. So my name is Antonio Granillo with the Partnership for Community Action. And as a community advocate working with an organization that is committed to building strong, healthy communities in our state, I really encourage the council to vote in favor of appropriating a million dollars for before, after-school and summer activities. Regarding planning for the $1 million, I encourage the council to reach out to the Southwest Organizing Project, who for the past four years has employed eight, over 80 students in our city, working with nonprofit, other nonprofit organizations. And I hear that they're looking for funding, so I'm sure they would be ready for that, as well as the Partnership for Community Action. And as a student who has benefited from these programs during the summers, after-school, I realize how valuable they are to dismantling those socioeconomic barriers among the students in our city. So I thank you for your time and hope you vote in favor. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Robert Laprise, followed by Megan Gomez, followed by Maria Gallegos, followed by May Skagbacken, followed by James Moore, followed by James Macklin. And again, once your name has been called, please come to the front, we have seating available for you and be prepared to speak. Welcome.
Thank you. Council President Sanchez, members of the council, my name is-
Next speaker is John Hedetta.
Mr. Chairman and committee, how many of you are parents? Could you raise your hand, please, if you're a parent? How many of you are grandparents? Okay? I read in the paper that the committee doesn't want to support children. I've worked for children in community centers for the city of Albuquerque. I've worked for Albuquerque Public Schools, probably more than any of you have worked in any of your jobs. And I see a need for programs for children. We're going into the summer. How much more with our community centers and other help could we have for children? Children who will stay out of trouble, out of breaking into your neighbors' homes or your homes, or going to drugs, or out in the ditches? We need to support our children. And I cannot see how you, Ms. Jones, and your committee cannot care about students enough with all the taxes and the money that this city puts in. We need to put our children first, and I see that you haven't. And I thank our mayor for wanting it.
Thank you. Next speaker is Antonio Granillo. Hopefully I pronounced that correctly.
Granillo, A-N Spanish. So my name is Antonio Granillo with the Partnership for Community Action, and as a community advocate, working with an organization that is committed to building strong, healthy communities in our state, I really encourage the council to vote in favor of appropriating a million dollars for before-after-school and summer activities. Regarding planning for the $1 million, I encourage the council to reach out to the Southwest Organizing Project, who, for the past four years, has employed over 80 students in our city, working with nonprofit, other nonprofit organizations, and I hear that they're looking for funding, so I'm sure they would be ready for that, as well as the Partnership for Community Action. And as a student who has benefited from these programs during the summers, after school, I realize how valuable they are to dismantling those socioeconomic barriers among the students in our city. So I thank you for your time and hope you vote in favor. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Robert Laprise, followed by Megan Gomez, followed by Maria Gallegos, followed by May Skagbacken, followed by James Moore, followed by James Macklin. And again, once your name has been called, please come to the front. We have seating available for you and be prepared to speak. Welcome.
Thank you. Council President Sanchez, members of the council. My name is Captain Robert Laprise with the Albuquerque Fire Department. I wanted to first start this off by saying thank you for supporting several of our latest programs, Lucas Mechanical CPR, Mobile Integrated Health, and the addition of some BLS trucks in the central corridor. These initiatives do put us in the top tier of large EMS providers nationwide. Councilmen winners, I'm one of your constituents, I wanted to thank you for everything that you do. And the rest of the council also. At AFD, we're busier than ever. We're pound-for-pound, we're the busiest department in the country. That's calls divided by people assigned. Violent crime is up, and violent EMS scenes are also up. As an EMS supervisor, I am sent to all critical calls and can offer a good global perspective. Our crews are exposed to and witness unspeakable atrocities and trauma on a daily basis. This was not the case 15 to 20 years ago. You must understand this. Currently, our members pay for on-call psychiatric group, who is used very frequently. I'm concerned about recruitment and retention. We had two classes canceled last year. This increases fatigue, increases overtime. Our sister cities are earning more than us. It makes it difficult to recruit and difficult to retain. I wanted to tell you, I'm very proud to serve alongside the men and women of one of the finest fire departments in the country, and I wanted to thank you for supporting this measure.
Thank you, Mr. Laprise. Megan Gomez, welcome.
Thank you, Council President Sanchez and for the entire council for listening to me today. My name is Megan Gomez. I'm the Theater Conservatory Director at Working Classroom, which has a 30-year-long reputation of providing opportunities for students, art students, here in our city. In the last year, we had over 50 paid positions for our students, working on murals, doing theater, and new media apprenticeships. I'm here to support Mayor Keller and his initiative to have a million dollars set aside for after-school funding and summer care. I know firsthand that this funding can change somebody's life in a very dramatic way, can change our whole city's life, because it's not just about keeping kids off the street, it's about giving them economic opportunities in order to build networks, in order to be able to build their own confidence and be able to speak so eloquently, like one of our alumni, Antonio Granillo, just did. So I hope that you can consider this as we think about what is possible for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Gallegos, welcome.
Thank you. Buenas tardes. Council President, members of the council. My name is Maria Gallegos, and I'm a mom. I'm also the Executive Director at Working Classroom. Megan is my colleague. And we are here tonight to ask for the council to support the $1 million appropriation for the summer youth after-school, out-of-school programming for our children in this community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. May, Sabakin, welcome.
Yeah, my name is Mai Sagbuckin. I'm the Director for the New Mexico Out of School Time Network, President and council members. I'm so pleased to be here, and I want to echo the previous speakers on the need to support the mayor and his staff on the effort to expand summer and after-school learning opportunities for our young people. This is not the time to delay investment in youth. I think at a local, state, and national level, we need to really realize the urgency of creating a safe space for young people between 3:00 and 6:00 p.m. and during the summertime. Most parents in this country do not have five weeks vacation, they have maybe 10 days if they're lucky, and they worried, day in and day out, what's going to happen to their children, especially during the summer and after school. And Albuquerque now has this opportunity to invest this $1 million, and I hear that there's some concerns about planning. And being a planner myself, I work day and night, and so there's all the other nonprofit leaders in this community to raise funds for programs for youth. So I know that if you look around, there's going to be so many plans to fill with funding that that's just not the issue. I think the city itself, the city and county staff similarly has all high hopes for wanting to do more of what's already working. So I think if you invest in existing programs that have evidence of success, you will see that just blossom. So the planning piece, I think, is somewhat of a no-brainer. If you look at Boston, three years ago, they decided to invest, I think it was $2.2 million, and they succeeded in reaching 10,000 young people in one year. So that is a good example of this possibly working. So please support the mayor and his staff. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Next speaker, James Moore, followed by James Macklin. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, President Sanchez, members of the council. I'm just glad I actually picked up the newspaper during my lunch break. I usually read the paper at 6:00 p.m., so I'm glad I heard about this meeting, and I just kind of felt it was my duty to come down here and talk. I actually started volunteering with an organization called AMBE, and it seems to be that, I guess, children are definitely the forefront of the subject tonight with the public and everybody here too as well. And I definitely want to say that in regards to, I have to applaud the committee and this administration too as well in regards to actually what they're wanting to do to help with the children, and a lot of the funds are actually being allocated to help the children too as well. But I'm glad that Megan used that phrase, keep the children off the street, because I grew up overseas a lot of my life, and my dad was in the military, actually worked in Dubai for a long time. And I love New Mexico. I've been here for about two decades now, and I wish we got more press in regards to the fact that Bill Gates started his Microsoft office here, or that Jeff Bezos, the CEO of Amazon, is from Albuquerque, New Mexico. But sometimes when I talk to my friends overseas, they tell me about basically, you know, they hear about some of the child trafficking cases, unfortunately. But there's a lot of good things happening. There's a lot of great things happening. Well, revenue's on the rise, there's money being allocated. And in regards to Megan's comment earlier about keeping children off the street, having programs in place to actually helping the children is great, after-school programs too as well. But one thing you don't see a lot of here is actually shelters for the children. And I don't know if you're familiar with this organization called Thorn. Do you have a time limit?
You've got a few more seconds.
Okay, just to get this out really quickly. Pretty much, my brother's wife actually volunteers with this organization called Thorn, and they battle child trafficking. It was actually founded by Ashton Kutcher. So this kind of came to my awareness a little more. I wasn't aware of it. It's one of those dirty things you never want to talk about or actually discuss, but just having that first place for the children to go to should be an utmost priority. Programs are very important.
Thank you.
Is that my time?
Now your time is acquired. Appreciate you coming down.
Okay. But you get my point, basically.
Yes, thank you. James Macklin, welcome.
President Sanchez, excuse me. President Sanchez, city councilors, my name is James Macklin. I am an elementary music teacher with Albuquerque Public Schools. I'm also a proud member of the Albuquerque Teachers Federation. I stand here in support of the $1 million the city's, the mayor's proposing for after-school and summer programs. We talk all the time, everybody talks till they're blue in the face about the achievement gap, but nobody talks about the opportunity gap. And what these after-school programs and summer programs do is they help close that opportunity gap. What these programs do is they give our students opportunities that they wouldn't normally have. We look, think, not just tutoring, but, you know, obviously, I'm a musician, so I'm going to be a little biased here, but guitar clubs, rock bands, there's, you know, after-school choirs. Many of my colleagues run after-school choirs, my colleagues run after-school guitar clubs, there's rock bands, there's so many, there are so many opportunities that these kids can get that their families, it comes from families where their parents are working their second or third jobs that they're just not going to get otherwise. So this is an incredible opportunity that we have, and an incredible investment that we can make, and I highly encourage our city councilors to vote for this appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Jordan, followed by Ron Wallace, Emma Jones, and then the last speaker under this item will be Coral Lee Quintana. Bill Jordan. And again, once your name has been called, come to the front and be prepared to speak. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, councilors. My name is Bill Jordan. I'm with New Mexico Voices for Children. I'm also here to speak in support of the mayor's request for the additional million dollars for before- and after-school programs and summer programs for our kids. I don't need to tell you, we have very high rates of poverty. We have very poor outcomes in our education system. Our kids in New Mexico are 49th in well-being, and they need all the help they can get. The city actually has a bit of a history of providing a lot of recreational and learning opportunities for kids, but a lot of our kids don't have the access. It's just not broad enough. It's not available to many of them, and we need to expand that opportunity. I spend most of my time in Santa Fe, and I know a lot about the budget there. I know that the education budget has been cut over the last 10 years by 14% per child. It's unconscionable. And I know all of you ran on education. I know you mentioned education when you ran, but you have very little to do with education. APS is kind of its own thing. This is your chance to impact education. It's only a million dollars, but it'll make a really big difference. It'll have a long-term impact on those kids who are able to get access. A million dollars for our kids and our working families is not too much to ask, and we strongly encourage your support for the mayor's request. Thank you.
Counselor Gibson.
Mr. Jordan. Mr. Jordan.
Mr. Jordan.
So I know that you know many of us personally on this. Do you really think that we do not think this is important, or that we're turning our back on education? I know you don't really believe that. Do you really believe that?
I think many of us, Counselor, I think many of us came tonight because we heard that...
You heard something on one side of that. There's always more than one side. If this were, and I don't want to say serious, I have to be careful, because I really don't want to insult the mayor or the administration. I really don't want to do that. But if this were a top priority, wouldn't you think that there would be some planning involved, that they would have something at this point tangible? It really doesn't exist. There was a little bit in the presentation that we got a couple of weeks ago. So, you know, be careful about laying this on council. Council has, in the past, written the checks for all kinds of funding, for the schools, for after-schools, and we will continue to do so. This is important. This is just as important to us, as important to me as it is to anybody else, including the mayor and including you. So I just want you to remember that, okay?
I appreciate that, Counselor.
Thank you.
And I know where your hearts are, and I think many of us are here tonight just to remind you of that.
So you just need to remember, you only heard...
Right.
...one viewpoint on this.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Thank you, Counselor Gibson. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. That was the last speaker?
No.
Okay, I'll do this later.
Okay, next speaker is Ron Wallace.
President Sanchez...
Welcome.
...and fellow council members. I'm speaking from experience because I am a longtime city employee. I used to work for the mayor's council on gangs. I was director of John Marshall Motor Service Center. We did a lot of youth programs, had a lot of programs. And I just, it just dumbfounded me as to even the possibility of not investing in our young people, keeping those programs alive, because from all of the things that happened when we were in service in those programs, it was a no-brainer, because our youth benefited considerably from those programs, not only about the school programs for opportunities to learn, but also opportunities to learn trades. And poor families, families who can't really afford to do a lot, that timeframe between 3:00 and 6:00 o'clock is invaluable for them. And the investment that the city does in that timeframe is incredible. If you look at the police report on youth violence and youth activities and the things that youth get in trouble, it's that timeframe, 3:00 to 6:00, that's the most active. So what you're doing is actually, this serves our community time and time again, because when we keep our kids off the streets and give them opportunities, and it's not parks and recreation, it's opportunities to learn and opportunities to do other things. So I'm looking at maximizing our city dollars, and that's absolutely one of the best programs we can invest in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Emma Jones, welcome.
Good evening, President Sanchez and council members. My name is Emma Jones, and I'm the lead organizer with Learning Alliance of New Mexico. Our organization believes that New Mexico children and youth deserve an equitable access to education regardless of race, cultural heritage, economic ability, location, or economic class. Learning Alliance stands in full support of the mayor's proposed $1 million expansion in summer and after-school programs. As we know that investing in our youth and children, we open up opportunities and pathways of access that our communities may not have otherwise. I know this firsthand, as not too long ago, I myself was a struggling young person who utilized city-sponsored programs that helped me in school at a time when I was facing homelessness and other really difficult situations in my life that made staying in school really difficult. Now, as a parent, I have struggled to get my child in these same programs, but because of wait lists and also the community centers have now implemented lottery processes to ensure that it's fair when, like whoever, because they're full, and they're utilizing that lottery process to ensure that it's fair and that it's randomized of who gets to be inside the community centers and who has access to those programs. So my son has not been able to get into a summer program for this year, and it's been really difficult for me as a parent. These programs are needed additional resources to ensure that they can be in a welcoming environment to all students who want or need access to these programs. We thank the office of Mayor Keller for working to help create access and leadership development opportunities for young students who may not have the ability or privilege to enter these programs without this financial support. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker on this agenda item will be Coral Lee Quintana.
Good evening, City Council. I am the treasurer of the Recuerdas de San Chávez Committee, and more than anything, I want to thank all of you for funding us for 2018 for the 25th anniversary of this event. Our budget item had been lost, and so we are here tonight to ask for it to be restored in the next budget. We had been receiving $22,000 in 2017 in previous budgets. If you're not familiar with this event, it is a fabulous annual event where we take 400 APS kids out to Sanchez Farms. We teach them about the acequias and about the importance of farm work here in our state of New Mexico. We also do Farm Worker Awareness Week at UNM, which supports migrant farm workers who are now at UNM getting a college education. Plus, we have our Annual Marcha en Fiesta at the National Hispanic Cultural Center, which is absolutely amazing, and I hope that you will join us next year. In any case, we're here to ask you if you would please restore our budget item to $20,000 so that we can continue with this good work, and thanks again for your support in 2018.
Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for Miss Yara. Is there an amendment for this? I didn't realize this had been cut.
Yes, Mr. President, Counselor Penya. I don't think that is contained in the committee substitute or in one of the amendments. If a person could remind me of the name of their organization, I could do a better search.
It's, I don't know if there's the name of the organization, but it's Recuerdo Dolores Fuerta. Sorry. Recuerdas de San Chávez, I'm sorry. And the amendment is that Recuerdas de San Chávez Marcha en Fiesta. So what was the name of the organization again?
Counselor Sanchez, I'm sorry, President Sanchez, Counselor Penya, no, that's not included in any of our allocations so far.
Okay. I'll give you a call. I'd like to add an amendment.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and go to Counselor Davis, and then we'll go to Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to...
I just wanted to follow up, and I so appreciate all the comments we received today from folks after reading the news and some of the new alerts and from folks who came down. And I want to follow Counselor Gibson's note and just make a quick comment about how we got here. Ms. Nyir, can I put you on the spot just a little bit to help remind me? I want to be clear to people. I think we're hearing the phone from maybe Counsel Ben. We heard a speaker earlier say that we should be investing in programs that we know work, and I think this council agrees. But Ms. Nyir, you and I talked about this, and we weren't going to bring it up, but I think it's important now. I'm quite frankly disappointed that the administration went to the news to complain that the council didn't support these new programs without explaining that the first budget the mayor sent down had cut $1.4 million in arts, cultural, drug rehab, and after-school and summer programs. Some of the ones that were cut, for example, Black History Month organizing, the Center for Southwest Fletcher and the Caesar Chavez Day, Hispanic Heritage Day, Outpost and Summer Fest, the rail yards altogether, Amigos de Amigas for family after-school programs for families that are hurting, Serenity Mesa for teenagers that are doing drug addiction recovery, Summer Roots Leadership for young black and brown African-American and Hispanic young leaders in the International District. And that's just one in five of the programs that were cut. Instead of going to the news, you and I sat down and had coffee and looked at this list and found a way with our budget staffs to fix and restore the dollars to groups that went unfunded by what I don't think was on purpose. I think it was just an early transition challenge for a new administration. But that $1.4 million that wasn't included in the mayor's budget is what allowed the mayor to propose a million dollars in unallocated new money for these programs that he's proposing and $400,000 in contract funds at family and community that the council could do. And we've had to go back and put all that back and add $1 million on top of that to fund what the mayor's requesting. It is frustrating to us at the council, and we've all said and talked about, that the administration is in the paper today blaming the city council for not supporting them without explaining that they cut $1.4 million worth of programs from community members and then ask us to put it back, and we worked together on this nicely to do it without scaring those groups that they would lose funding. How can we get back to the place to explain how we got here and get back in a better place that the community understands that we've worked together not just to restore that dollars, but now to create $2.5 million almost in new community programs?
Ms. Nyir, would you like to respond?
Yes, please. Thank you, Council President Sanchez, Counselor Davis. Let me correct the record on a few things. We did not go to the paper. I don't know if you followed our relationship with the Albuquerque Journal, but we are not generally dictating the narrative. And if you had any question about that, you can see the picture of me they used. Would not be the one I would have chosen had we gone to the paper. We can't control what the paper decides to pick up on or the pictures that they use. I appreciate that our folks are passionate and came out and want to support this initiative, but I can tell you, we did not go to the paper. I can also express my gratitude as well for working together on the items that we left out of our budget. That was not an entirely new appropriation. We had attempted, as I've explained in previous council meetings, to put that money into a pot that could be applied for competitively and transparently for the community groups. And we learned, as you said, rookie mistake, we learned that the timing of doing that was inappropriate for the organizations who have historically benefited from those programs. So we worked, as you said, with the council to help restore that list, but not all of that funding was new. In terms of working together on this particular issue, we have worked together, and that's why there's an amendment here that hopefully will be considered and debated and ultimately voted on. So I wouldn't take quite so much umbrage with the community coming out to support youth programming when you have here a cooperative path that we've worked together with all of you on, a path to restore the funding that they've been asking for.
Thanks, Ms. Nyir. I appreciate that. And I do, it's been a great process working with the new administration because we see a lot of passionate people that have great ideas, and I'm excited that there's new money available to do some of those, and I appreciate the work that we were able to do to get those other items put back and to give some confidence to people that they're signing their kids up for after-school that starts next week, that they won't be cut off in July. And that wasn't intentional, and we didn't, none of us wanted that, and so that's important. But I do want the community to know that we've worked really hard together. We were all on the phone with each other all weekend with our calculators and spreadsheets trying to find a way to be sure that everybody who's doing good work now continues to do it, and there's opportunities for new folks. And I do want to acknowledge that process and say thank you. But it's been frustrating and hard, as we know, and I want to be sure folks know that we've worked hard to restore the dollars so that everybody who has a program now can keep it, right? And that there's opportunity for others, and I appreciate that. It is a cooperation, and I think we have a good agreement that restores that million dollars. I think we had that commitment last week. I'm sorry the paper's catching up late and some of the advocates are, you know, sort of firing folks up because I hope they can trust that we're working well together, and I think they'll see that when we have this budget that has more money for kids than ever before, and we agree for it. Thanks.
Let's go to Counsel Winter and Counsel Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just need to clarify some other things, too. 20 years ago, Counsel Armiho did the middle school initiative fund and high school grants, and about four years ago, I think Counsel Guardunio and myself took that million dollars and moved it over to the community school initiative project where a million dollars was used and given to charter schools, Albuquerque Public Schools, to be used for after-school care and for after-school programs. And that, if I'm correct, that money is still in the budget, so we're talking the $900 is for other after-school programs, correct?
Yes, President Sanchez, Counselor Winter, there is still funding in the proposed budget for the community schools program, and I'm sorry, it's more like about, it's a little over $700,000.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Who's next?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Just want to reiterate that for those of you who obviously one person read the paper and thinks that I am evil and hate children, I have children, I have grandchildren, and I support them, and I think education is the most important thing that they can have, plus family relationships. However, I do not support what the mayor had in the initial budget, that we moved to another area. One of the reasons was we were very explicit when we passed the 3/8 of a percent grocery receipts tax, that no less than 60% of that would be used for public safety. Now, I must say, I think probably the community has a different idea of public safety than what was represented in the first budget that we got, and therefore, a goodly portion of that went to after-school programs and daycare and the other programs we're talking about this evening. As I told the administration, and I believe everyone who bothered to ask, I am not opposed to those programs. I think that the funding came to us before there was a plan on what was going to be done with them. I made it very clear to administration, every member of administration who cared to listen to me and the city council, that we do in fact support funding those midterm when we have programs that we know those are going to be used for. We do not have an overabundance of money. We do need to fund programs that are going to be used. We don't need extra money sitting around in the budget to be re-appropriated mid-year. We need to take care of what we can now and take care of the children and these new programs when we know what they're going to be and they fit their criteria. But in addition to that, in this year's budget, we have appropriated, if it passes, childcare contracts, $1,312,750. Community recreation, $2,285,880. Human health services, $1,969,280. Public education, $2,031,50. Youth gang contracts, $1,232,500. That is $8,831,460 for youth programs, not including the ones that we re-appropriated that were missed by the administration and put into this budget. So to sit and think from whatever information you got that the city council does not care about the children of our community and the people of our community is wrong. We do care. We only have so much money. So you come to us and tell us which programs you like that you want us to cut so we can add more programs. But right now, we have a fair and equitable budget that covers all sections where people need help. Is it as much as we'd like to do? Not a chance. I don't know if we could ever get as much money as we'd like to give. But just to let you know, the city council is dedicated to helping the people who need help of all ages. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jones. Next, we're going to go to our amendments, and I'm going to go to the item labeled J in our packets, and that'll be floor amendment number one. That will be Counsel Penya, Counsel Borrego, and Counsel Davis. Counsel Penya.
Okay. So this amendment is, this is a neutral amendment that restores the $954,000 for youth programs to begin in 2018-2019 school year. The breakdown is as follows. $200,000 in youth programs and cultural services, $554,000 in family and community services. Family and community services will utilize $200,000 to address to address the waiting list for after-school and summer programs for children on the West Side. The sources are reductions, and I think I'm going to not read it as stated. I think we have agreement by the administration to take out the $60,000 and add that to the risk portion of it, and then $114,000 for mobile cameras already funded by the state capital outlay, $200,000 for boardups in the planning department, which can be funded in the CIP cleanup, $50,000 for new data mining recovery position in the Office of Inspector General, and the 500, and it would now be $590,000 in transfers to the risk fund for Risk Recovery FY19 that can be addressed by either an increase in contributions for the remaining five years or an extension beyond five years at a lower amount. I would move a due pass.
You have a motion and a second by Counsel Borrego. Counsel Borrego, and then we'll go to Counsel Davis.
Okay, Mr. Chair, are you asking me to read my two amendments then? No.
That's already included in the bill. Do you have any comments?
No, I think that... I think that in thinking and listening tonight, we had a proclamation about teachers and, I mean, you know, dealing, Mr. The gentleman that left earlier that worked for the city that talked about the gangs, and I think that the question, you know, is where do we do prevention? And the prevention is at the level of the children. I mean, and that's how we move forward as a city, and I think that, I agree with Counselor Jones. I don't think anybody on this council, you know, wants to exclude our children, and I think everyone knows how important it is to bring New Mexico and Albuquerque back to a place where, you know, our children are not at the bottom of every national list in the country. And so I think that it's really important that we look into our budget and look at programs that are not maybe benefiting the entire city. And youth programs benefit the entire city. And so I, you know, Counselor Penya asked me to co-sponsor this with her, and I didn't hesitate for a second because I, and I don't have any children, by the way. I never had any children. But I think that that is the place that we start turning the tide around, and so I am happy to support Counselor Penya's proposal and her request to support this.
Let's go to Counsel Davis and Counsel Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to defer to Ms. Yara, who I think has a moment, a comment on the amendment itself, if that's okay.
Ms. Yara, go and proceed.
Yes, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out that there does need to, this amendment does need to be changed to reflect the fact that we are not taking some of the money for the Healthy Futures Program that's covered in a different amendment. So the administration was amenable to taking another $60,000 from the professional accountability line of the Police Department. So in Amendment J, as it reads, we would strike number three. On page three, line 26, entitled Homeless Support Services, reduce the amount by $60,000. That would be taken out. Item nine, we would add $60,000 to that amount. So on page five, line 33, entitled Professional Accountability, decrease the amount by $590,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just follow that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to defer for that amendment. So I want to move that amendment, Mr. President, just so that we can be clear where we are.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for amendment, will be amendment number two
Yeah, thank you.
To Committee Subcommittee R-18-24. Any questions? All those. Counsel Jones.
Before we proceed, may I ask Ms. Yara a question?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Yara, what, for those friends and family watching at home, what does a professional accountability mean, that we are taking the money from?
Yes, Mr. President, Chairman, Chairwoman Jones, I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that. So this is the program strategy where the Risk Recovery Program is being tagged against the Police Department, so we would just be taking more out of the Risk Recovery Program for APD instead of the Family and Community Services Department.
Go and proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Yara. And do you know what the recommended amount to be in there? And tell me, what is that used for specifically?
Mr. President and Chairwoman Jones, I mean, sorry, Chair Jones. So the money that we're looking at is what we call our Risk Recovery Program. There's a 10-year plan in place to start to build up our funding for our self-insured Risk Recovery Claims Program. In recent years, we've, the council and other administrations have dug into that amount. The effect on our risk reserves is that our, they call it a confidence level. Our target is normally 55%. We're currently at somewhere about 25%. So that means if all claims were to come in today and we had to pay them, we would have a 25% chance of doing that.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. And that 25% is before or after we take the $530,000 out of it or don't fund it?
Right. So, Mr. President, Counselor Jones, so ideally, after the 10-year recovery program is done, we will be up to the 55%. The Police Department is getting an allocation of about $1.8 million of those funds, so this would take it down, you know, to about 1.2 almost instead of 1.8.
And one more.
Go and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Yara, does that in any way affect our financial standings, like in bonding or anything like that?
President Sanchez, Counselor Jones, not normally. Bonding agencies usually tend to look at our available fund balance in the general fund and other enterprise funds when we issue bonds from there. This is more just the health of our risk self-insured fund.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Davis, and we'll go to Counsel Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, I just want to, I think we still have this woman on the floor. I want to get back to that. I want to close on that, but I just want to make a point just for plain language for those, as you said, following along at home. This amendment restores $954,000 for youth programs that would begin in the 2018-2019 school year. Those programs that the administration and the various departments had targeted, that they think they can target to increase our youth programs that would help divert lower crime, help us make it be a safer community and a better connected community. And I think it does it by looking at places where we have room to delay and defer other programs and to prioritize those youth programs. So in plain language, this simply restores the money that the mayor's requesting for those after-school programs, assuming the council passes our own amendments tonight that restore the remainder of those programs. So thank you, Mr. President. I urge your support on this amendment in the underline.
Counsel Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I don't have any questions on the amendment, on Counselor Davis's amendment, but on this amendment, I do. Are you going to?
Let's go and move. We have a motion and a second on the floor for amendment number one to floor amendment one. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. No. That was Counsel Ben on the phone. Those say no. That carries... No? That was Council Benton on the phone. Those say no. That carries unanimously. We're back on the bill. Council Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for the administration, so I, I think we need some, some clarification, and I have, who's gonna do the oversight on this money? What programs and planning? What are the programs? Has there been any planning done? And where are these programs gonna be housed?
Council President Sanchez, Council Winter, thank you for that question. We appreciate that. And while I, I give some preface, I would invite Jess Martinez, Carol Pierce to, to come down to talk about some of the preliminary concepts that we have, and also to give a little more detail about the waitlist that we have for current programming. The money itself would be divided among three departments. The most, most of the money would be in the family and community services program, which houses all of our community centers and the activities that happen there, and then another piece would go to the parks and recreation department, which does things like athletics and recreation programs, obviously, and then a third piece would go to the cultural services department. But I think to understand how we intend to deploy these dollars, it would be helpful if they gave some background first on the waitlist that we have, especially in certain parts of town, and then roll into some of the ideas that we have for expanding existing efforts that we know work.
Director, go and proceed.
Great. Thank you, President Sanchez and council members. Oops. Right here. Okay. Thank you, President Sanchez and council, council members. We will be building on some of the existing programs that we have oversight for in our community centers, as well as our playground recreation program that incurs in schools that's run by our staff. As we've heard, we do partner with a lot of community agencies to meet that need for our at-risk youth, and we've heard from, some of those folks spoke tonight. I think we do have a waiting list that Deputy Director Jess Martinez can speak to in a variety of our, our centers, and some of our plans to mitigate and reduce that waiting list.
Ms. Martinez?
Mr. President, Council Winter, approximately throughout the city of Albuquerque, we have a waitlist of 836. We are trying to disperse that throughout the city of Albuquerque. Currently, we are partnering up with 311 to make sure that the calls that come in to 311, they get the adequate information to where we do have availability. We are actually in conversations with the office of senior affairs to possibly offer transportation. Logistically, it might be difficult, but we're looking at it. So, there's a myriad of, of options that we're looking at to mitigate our waitlist currently. As far as the school year, as Director Pierce did say, we are working with a lot of agencies in collaborating and how we can expand our availability to our children.
Council Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, are these programs gonna be in the schools? Are they gonna be in the community centers? Are all of the above, senior centers, multi-generational centers, parks and rec?
Mr. President, Counciler Winter, I can only speak to family and community services. We do have the contract for CSI, we, oversight of the CSI contract, so I will say it will be within the community centers. It will be with, in partnership with CSI, as well as the playground recreation program and therapeutic recreation.
Thank you. One more question. Who's gonna have oversight on how this money's spent, what programs, if they're successful or not?
Council President San, oh, sorry. Council President Sanchez, Councilor Winter, let me turn it over to Chief Operating Officer Lawrence Rayel, who is the direct report for all of these departments.
Mr. President and Councilor Winter, obviously, we're going to review every one of these contracts individually as we move forward with them. Many of these programs are existing programs that we already offer services and that we're going to expand to help alleviate the waiting lists that are currently, that we currently have. So, some of the programs that we talked about was, for example, in parks and recreation, we're looking at, at the BIMP program, which is a program that is utilized by, in the community to help kids learn about nature, conservation, working out in the Bosque area to help restore trails, and to expand those programs so we give kids a, a more, if you will, robust experience about what is happening in our, in the Bosque, in the area, in the areas that Parks and Rec work with. We're also looking at, for example, the middle school soccer programs and expand those to give, again, opportunity for children to participate, or more children to participate in the, in the programs throughout the city. But at the end of the day, the idea here is to give them an opportunity early on to review those contracts and to continue to look at additional services that we might be able to provide with other, with other nonprofits that might be out there that can help us augment the programs to make them bigger and better.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Council Gibson, and then Council Davis.
Thank you. So, there's a, one problem, the smallest problem, which really does bother me with this amendment, and that is that it does take 200,000 dollars from boardups and teardowns from planning. And when we did that task force and got very good things from that, that task force, that was one of the things, that, that fund needed to be equipped to handle more than what it has been. So, we've got it built up, and now we're taking it back down again, 200,000 dollars. And so, I just have to state that. I got a problem with that. The, the other places that you're taking it from, I think we can probably live with, but I'm not crazy about the, taking 200 grand from the, the boardups. That's it.
Ms. Rayel?
Mr. President and Councilor Gibson, this administration totally supports that effort. We know that that's an issue that is a public safety issue. We are prepared to come to you mid-year. If we run out of money in those programs, we'll come back and we can use their capital money that we might have available to help support the implementation of that. The fact of the matter is that part of the proposal in the budget is to expand the Safe City Strike Force, to begin to look more and get more aggressive on, on those issues. As we hire the staff and get going, we'll certainly be back to the council if we find ourselves in a situation where we need additional funds for that project.
All right. Thank you.
Council Davis, then Council Jones.
Ms. Yara, can you clarify, remind me of city budget processes for this, and of course, if the administration needs to weigh in. Social service contracts, unlike other contracts, do not have to come back to the city council for approval. So, if we allocate this money tonight, is all or portions of these would not have to return to city council for approval or oversight? Is that correct?
President Sanchez, Councilor Davis, so, social service contracts that are administered by the family and community services department, I believe, come to the council if they're over 120,000 dollars. I'm sorry if that's incorrect, but it's a, a larger threshold than the regular PT contracts. They do have their own RFP process. This would not apply to parks and recreation or the cultural services department. They, so, if they met that threshold, they would come to council for approval. Otherwise, they would not.
Ms. Nyir, can you help me, Mr. President, Ms. Nyir? Can you help me just, I may have over, missed it, but do you have an anticipated date of when the administration thinks they might begin as they're developing these processes? I know they're farther along than we publicly discussed, but the processes for when groups might apply, when those contracts might be issued, I mean, I, is this a July 1 thing or a second quarter thing? Do you have an idea yet? And I know it might vary department to department.
Council President Sanchez, Councilor Davis, we'd be happy to report in during the administration question and answer period as we go through the June council meetings. I'm not, as, as you asked this question before, and, and as I mentioned at that time, so, a lot of this money is gonna be used internally to, to double down on the efforts that we are already doing, and so, the first step is to parse out, you know, what is gonna be contracted out and what is not. For example, I think a lot of community members are interested in expanding investment in, in the CSI. I, I don't think that we are, but that's just a, you know, one, one example of the, the things that we need to sort of come to a decision on, and then we will certainly make it very well-known and publicly announced if there's an opportunity for folks to, and send in their proposals.
And so, Ms. Nyir, if I can just clarify, I, it, this is not money that the administration anticipates spending on July 1, at least. Probably not, right? I mean, we're gonna have to develop some process for this, for each department.
Council President Sanchez, Councilor Davis, that's correct. We will not be spending it on July 1. We have a chicken egg problem here, right, with, with putting out a, a call for proposals when we don't know whether we're gonna get the money. So, you know, you guys give us the money, and we will happily put out a call for programs.
So, Mr. President, if I could follow with one last. If we set this into reserve, in other words, knowing that the money is there, and the department, the administration were to come up with the programs for that, they could return to the council and say, okay, we're ready. This is what we're proposing, and the council could pass a resolution and release that dollars once the administration is ready. Is that a, that's a budget process we have available that allows for some accountability for some of the counselors who are concerned about not having a plan, not being ready to have a, funding a project with, that is not fully executed or planned yet?
Ms. Rayel?
Mr. President and Councilor Davis, I think the, the, the real challenge here is that there are programs that obviously we will expand this summer, because there are programs, there will be initiatives going, where there are opportunities for us to just increase the number of, of children that are in the programs. Other programs where we have new contracts, et cetera, as Ms. The CAO said, we're happy to report to you at every council meeting, if you'd like, on the new programs, and obviously, any of those that are required to go to the council for approval because of the procurement issues will go to the council. But there are some of these programs, like, for example, the, the conservation programs, that's really a question of just hiring additional staff to help the, the department. There's already a lot of children on these lists that want to get a summer job, and so, we're gonna provide them an opportunity as quickly as we can. But as she said, a lot of the others may require a little more of, of an upfront conversation, and we'll come to all of you and, and provide you a report on that.
Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Rayel. That was, that was good information. However, we're talking 954,000 dollars here. That's a lot of money, and with no programs in front of us that it's going to be used for, and granted, on any number of these, we don't have to say yes or no, but we also have the right to say yes or no with the appropriation of this particular money. I would like very much to see this, and I would like to make a motion that this money goes into reserve, since you can't do anything with it. Our fiscal year doesn't start until July 1 anyway. Any programs that you, so the money is there, it's available. Any monies that you already have the programs set up, you go for, come to us the first meeting in June, and we will try to take that out of reserves, although the budget hasn't started yet. So, I think it's something we all want to know what it's being used for and when. And we realize we can't say no to some of the programs, to the majority of the programs, but we really want to see what it's used for. So, I would like to make a motion, counselors, that we put this amount in reserves and ask for the administration to come before us and tell us what, when they, when they're releasing the money and what they're gonna use it for.
Council, you have a second? We have a motion and a second on the floor, and I will not be supporting this motion, Council Jones. On Albuquerque's west side, we have community centers that are full, and if we can accommodate many of these families on Albuquerque's west side for many years, there's been a long waiting list, and we now, I think, have the opportunity in the avenue, and our staff and the administration has to work quickly to make sure that we can fill some of these spots. I just would hate to see, again, year after year, that these children will not have a place to go during the summer months. And I just feel that it is critical that we move this amendment now and not wait, and put our faith and trust in the administration, that they will do the right thing, because I believe our kids are just way too important, and we cannot afford to wait. I think these are just really important issues, and I feel confident that Mayor Keller has made commitments, and he's made promises to the residents during his campaign, and I think that's why he's, he is so passionate about, you know, getting this million dollars in appropriations, so they can start working on programs that'll benefit the youth of our community. But I will not be supporting this, this motion. Council Jones, then we'll go to Council Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand that, but I go back to, this is in the 2019 budget. The money isn't there until July 1. So, I cannot understand why they can't give us the information on those programs in June. We take it out of reserves the 1st of July, and they can do the programs. They don't have, they can't have the money until the, it's in the budget, and the budget doesn't start until July 1. So, it seems to me that there is plenty of time in there for some accountability. They obviously know at this time which programs they want to expand and support, or they wouldn't have asked for 954,000 dollars. So, I just want to know what they are, how much, when they're gonna begin, and what they're gonna do with it, and I want it, would like to see it in reserves so we know it's being used and what it goes for. Sometimes we have money sitting around in pots that needs to be used, especially this money for our children, which is what we want it to go for. We don't want it to just sit in a pot for a year and not have anything done with it. So, I would like to, I will reiterate my motion in a second to put this 954,000 dollars in reserve.
Council Borrego, and then Council Penya.
I, I'm sorry, Council Jones, but I can't support your motion, because I think that one of the questions that we talked about tonight is planning, and if we push this out until July, we think about planning, I mean, it, you know, the, the kids that are out on, gonna be out on the street in May, at the end of May, at the end of June. I mean, the administration doesn't really have the opportunity to deal with some of the issues that we have currently, and I think that we already have these programs in place that are working, and one of the issues that we talked about earlier is looking at programs that aren't working. These programs are working, and so, why wouldn't we consider adding additional money to fund these programs? I think it's imperative that we begin planning tomorrow morning, tonight, when we get home, and figuring out how is this money gonna be spent, where is it appropriate, and start moving forward. If we wait three more months, there's three more kids in the D home, or not three, 30 more kids in the D home, and, and then we're dealing with a different issue. So, I, I really think that we need to, to ensure and, and trust the mayor's office and trust the administration that they're going to look for the most effective and efficient ways to plan and implement this funding. So, I'm sorry, I, I can't support it for those reasons.
Council Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually, I, I won't be supporting the amendment either. I just think that, you know, with after-school programs, I'm sure, I know some of the money's probably gonna put it, be put out for RFP, but for me, I, having six children and 11 grandchildren, I just know how in dire need many families are, especially right now, you know. I think Wednesday's the last day of school. There's a lot of parents who have received calls from constituents, from family members, just saying that they really need a place to be able to put their children in, and unfortunately, a lot of the community centers that we have on the west side are up to capacity, or there's a lottery in terms of getting our kids in, you know. So, even if there wasn't a, a set out plan, if you will, for the dollars, 954,000 dollars is a drop in the bucket in terms of the need in, the needs in our community. And honestly, instead of being so prescriptive, I actually think that this is a good opportunity for many of our community centers and other programs that are run by the city to be able to have the additional dollars to, to add more children. You know, sometimes, growing up, you know, just having a place to land for many kids is important. In recreation, if you all recall, we learned a lot of, a bunch of different things, whether it be art or field trips to different areas, you know. So, I think these dollars would go, or will go a long way for that youth. So, I won't be supporting the amendment, but thank you.
Council Benton, did you want to say something?
Uh, no, but I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Council Jones, then Council Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I, I think I'm, I think we might be mixing up what we're saying here. I'm not saying they can't have the money. I'm saying I want to see what it's for, but in reality, when we pass the budget, it's my understanding that that money is not available until July 1, when the budget comes into effect. So, in fact, a, through June, 'cause I'm thinking we're gonna pass the budget pretty soon now, that that, and so, a month to get their act together, or even, we have our first meeting, June 4, I believe, if they would come to us in June 4 and say, these are the programs, we're gonna use this money, we say, yay, thank you for telling us what the programs are. Write the check July 1. I, I'm not trying to hold up money. I'm not trying to move money someplace else. I'm trying to say, I want to see what the money is being used for, because we have a lot of different ideas here, and it will not, am I, Ms. Yara, can they access this money before July 1, when the, the answer with the shaking of the head is no. So, I'm not sure why we are concerned about not telling us what programs we're using when you're already telling us that you- when you're already telling us that you don't know for sure which ones you're going to use. But if you do know, why are you unwilling to tell us what those are?
Ms. Nyer?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Jones. I think that the process, unless I'm, I'm not familiar, I think it would actually be a little more complicated than us coming and saying what we want to do and, and the council saying yay. I think it would probably need to take the form of amendments, of some sort of either amendment to the budget or some sort of official action. And that, I don't know the, how quickly that that could move. But in general, I would just echo a couple of things. First, I just want to thank the councillors for working together on putting together this alternative amendment. And, you know, this is, even though it can be long and painful, this is exactly the kind of conversation that we need to be having so that the public understands how complex these issues are. And we appreciate the collaboration. We're happy to continue to report in on it. I am concerned that although the money is not available July 1, the process of sort of coming back to the council and getting possible approval of here's what we might want to do and then we have to go out for proposals if we need to contract that money out, it's going to push us not only past the summer but past the beginning of the school year. And as some of the councillors have mentioned, that's just not acceptable given where we are right now.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Nyer. I don't believe, I'm not asking to get, to approve the programs, I just want to know what they are. I want to know what they are. I mean, if you already have them in mind, then that reserve amount would be available to you July 1. I just want to know what they are. We don't have, we don't need to have the approval to take them out of reserves. We just, we will write it so that we just want to know what they are. In a timely manner. So that in six months, when we still have $850,000 in this account, we can say, what is your plan? That's, that's my whole goal here. I just want to know what it's going to be used for.
Counselor Gibson, and then we'll go to Council Vice President Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree. I, I think that reserving this will actually prevent any, anyone else from using it for anything else. And we know that happens because, well, $200,000. I'm still not over.[756.44][756.44](Laughter). So, and as far as, there's no legislation that's, that needs to go along with that. A simple communication from the administration would do it. Executive communication, sent over, looked at it, it would go on, probably go on the consent agenda. So I, actually, I think it would be a good idea, you know, I think, actually, I think it would protect the departments and the people who will be using that.
Council Vice President Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just ask maybe the president because you would be conducting these meetings, administration, maybe another alternative would just be have the administration come up every meeting and, and just kind of give us a report of where things are and how things are moving and, and how the money's being spent or to be spent.
Ms. Nyer?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Harris, yes, we would be happy to do that.
Okay, we have an amendment to place the $954,000 in reserves.
Amendment to the amendment.
Yes. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no.
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 That fails on a 6 to 3 vote. Okay, we are back on floor amendment number one as amended to committee substitute R-18-24. Are there any other questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes and raise your hand. Yes? Those opposed, say no. Counselor Benton?
Yes.
Okay, that carries on a 8 to 1 vote. And now we are back on the, on the bill. Let's go down to amendment number two, which is going to be item A in your packet. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. This amendment is simply, it makes technical adjustments for committee substitute deletions and additions that were applied to the incorrect program strategies and other rounding errors as determined by the Office of Budget and Management. The amendment is neutral and does not change the total committee substitute appropriations amount. Would you like for me to read each of these, Mr. President?
Do you want to read the explanation? That should be adequate.
I just did.
Okay. Any other questions? See none?
I move your approval.
We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number two to committee substitute R-18-24. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, say no.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Benton. We are now in your packet, number B, which would be floor amendment number three to committee substitute R-18-24. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an amendment clarifying that any savings identified from police officer personnel appropriations may not be used for other purposes without approval of the city council. This definition of public safety is too broad to use in this case. Therefore, the amendment is on page 2, line 4, replace the term "public safety" with the term "police officer." Move approval.
We have a motion? We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number three to committee substitute R-18-24. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under C, which is floor amendment number four. Counselor Winter and Counselor Davis.
I'm going to pass.
Counselor Davis. Okay, let's go to item D, which is now floor amendment number four to committees, to committee substitute R-18-24. Counselor Davis?
I think we have a different one later, Mr. President, I'll pass this one.
Okay, let's go to, in your packets, it's listed as Z, floor amendment number four to committee substitute R-18-24. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. This item amends increased appropriations for economic development, homeless support and cultural community events through a reallocation of funding as outlined below. As we previously heard, the $60,000 that was held aside for Healthy Futures will be reduced and it, we also take into account and sweeping up some programs that were double counted in the original committee sub and the original budget, increasing and reallocating those dollars for those homeless and community service programs as outlined there. I move floor amendment number four.
We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number four to committee substitute R-18-24. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed, say no.
Yes.
That carries unanimously. We are now in your packet, it's identified as F, and that would be floor amendment number five. Counselor Borrego.
Mr. Chair, councillors, is this not floor amendment number six?
No, five.
No, five. Okay. So, this amendment designates $50,000 of the aviation's operating funds for the completion and/or update of an economic development analysis of the Double Eagle 2 airport. And I just might add that the last economic development analysis that was done was done in 20, what was it? 2003? Is that correct? Pardon me? 2013?
Mr. President, Counselor Borrego, 2013.
13, so that was five years ago. So more than likely, this would be an update.
Thank you, Counselor Borrego. Do you want to move it?
Move approval, please.
We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number five to committee substitute R-18-24. Are there any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, say no.
Yes.
That carries unanimously. We are now on item junior packet, which will be floor amendment number six to committee substitute R-18-24. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, councillors. This amendment adds $40,000 to Council Services Department for the completion of a study that will provide recommended design guidelines for adoption of urban centers and activity centers located on Albuquerque's West Side. The amendment will be funded from non-recurring, reoccurring CNG fuel rebate revenues in the general fund, which are expected for FY '19. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number six to committee substitute R-18-24. Any, Counselor, Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Borrego, thank you for putting this forward, but I do believe this is something that we already have with our community planning area assessments. I think they're supposed to look at this, the unique aspects of each, and it could undermine their process. It could also duplicate efforts that are already a part of future planning department responsibilities. The IDO has already raised the bar for design standards for all activity centers and urban centers and they are the same on the east and the west side. So the existing requirements for the corridor plan are also carried over as character protection overlays. So this seems to me to be kind of a duplication of what is already in place in different departments. And I know how tight we are in our council services budget sometime and I would like to ask the councillor, please, if you would put together an objective to make this happen or ask for the city council to do that and I will certainly ask those departments to do this. I would stand behind that 100 percent.
Counselor Jones and councillors, the, the purpose of this actual amendment is not to undermine anything that is in the community assessment areas. It would be to actually enhance those community assessment areas which have not yet begun. And I think that it would give us an opportunity in areas that are undeveloped, especially in areas such as Unser and Paseo, areas in Counselor Penya's district that are undeveloped, Counselor Sanchez's district that are undeveloped. So this would actually help us to get a jumpstart on some of those community assessment areas and give us, we would be able to look at the existing plans that are in place and determine what would be the best sort of development for those particular community development areas, especially our urban areas. And it would look to maybe give us some guidance for areas that are undeveloped.
Mr. President?
Counselor Benton?
Mr. President, I just want to speak in opposition to this amendment. I, I do feel that, that there's been a lot of discussion about how we're going to proceed with, with these aspects of the IDO and the community planning area process. And I, I commend Counselor Borrego's enthusiasm for, for digging into these issues. And I think every councillor should dig into these issues and the areas that they represent. But, but this seems to be, to be going afield from that. You know, it's a relatively small amount of money, but let's say we, we multiply this by multiple CPA areas, we should really be dealing with this as a city as a whole. And, and each councillor certainly organize and work with their community to, to participate in, in the process that's already been laid out and approved by the city council.
Counselor?
Counselor Borrego.
Benton, I don't see this as taking a different direction than what's already been approved. It would be looking at what's been approved and what is adopted in the IDO and the comprehensive plan and enhancing that. So I think, I see it as a jumpstart for the West Side and I think that it is appropriate at this time to ask, especially in light that the IDO was just approved on the 17th. So I, I, I see it as a way for us to look into the future for areas that are undeveloped and those are very different from the east side or the south, the downtown, which are primarily developed. And these are looking to areas that are undeveloped property.
Any other questions? Council Vice President Harris?
Since we're having a lively debate on this issue between councillors, I was wondering the administration, planning department, if you have any concerns about this or want to weigh in?
Director Campbell?
Mr. President, councillors, the budget that was proposed that does not include this is adequate and we have supported the, the funding for the IDO going forward. It puts us in an, in an awkward position additionally to be saying whether the council services department should get funding within, within your domain. So I would respectfully decline to, to comment except as to say that we have, we have adequate resources in the, in the budget as presented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Jones?
Thank you. Again, the IDO is new. Obviously, this is going to be very useful in undeveloped areas, but there are undeveloped areas all over the city. I agree with Director Campbell. I believe this is something that is accounted for, funded and should be handled within the planning department for the entire city, taking into consideration the different areas and what they're doing and what their growth pattern is. So I cannot support this.
Counselor Borrego.
Mr. President and councillors, with all due respect, we just funded a, an amendment, a previous amendment for an economic development study for the Double Eagle Airport. And this basically looks at areas that are going to be probably our future. So I think it's highly appropriate for us to look to areas that the city will be growing into and, you know, expanded. There's discussion with Rio Rancho and how, you know, I guess, Paseo Double Con or, or Trisco Vista would impact the West Side. So I think this is highly appropriate, especially in light that we've developed areas like the baseball fields. And, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of new development on the West Side. And I think that, you know, we are dealing with issues that are related to infrastructure and looking for ways to ensure that the proper development takes place in light, you know, also in terms of how our water will be used. I mean, there's a lot of issues that the springs to the surface. So I think it's highly appropriate. Thank you.
Counselor Harris?
Thank you. And, and it took me a while to sort of get my head around if I really like this or not and I've decided that I don't and here's why. It's because it's a study to provide recommended design guidelines for the adoption of urban centers and activity centers. So the study already has an outcome which some members of the council might not like, which is creating new design guidelines after we've adopted the IDO. And one of the things that I realized as we've been going through this process is one of the problems that the city has had citywide is that our zoning was too complex, we had too many sector plans, we had too many overlays of different zoning in different areas. And the last thing I would like to see at this early stage of the IDO is to start adding some of that stuff back. And this amendment presumes that that's exactly what we're going to do. The study that will provide recommended, recommended design guidelines, the study will provide recommended design guidelines and, and I'm not so sure that's a good idea. So for that reason, I think I'd like to vote against this amendment and then come back with whatever recommended design guidelines the councillor wants for the area and, and look at it at that point.
Okay, let's go to vote on floor amendment number six to committee substitute R-18-24. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed? That fails on a 3 to 6 vote. We are now on item H in your packets, which is floor amendment number seven, and Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. On page 3, line 3, entitled "Community Events Increase the Amount by $5,000." This amendment adds $5,000 to cultural services allocation for the Festival Ballet Nutcracker on the Rocks event. Actually, I think it's a Festival Ballet Nutcracker in the Land of Enchantment. This will, total funding of $25,000 with the amount of $20,000 already included in the committee substitute. This amendment will be funded by non-recurring CNG fuel rebate revenues in the general fund, which are expected in FY '19. And we have actually given this organization $25,000 in the past and the director of the organization asked for increase at one meeting.
We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number seven to committee substitute R-18-24. Any questions? Counselor Borrego.
Counselor Harris, I would ask, why are we sort of looking, focusing on one theater group or festival ballet for Nutcracker? Why wouldn't there be others that we would be looking at?
Well, the ballet does lots of other events, but the, what this particular funding would do is that this theater gives performances to, I believe, its children who are, who would not otherwise be able to, to see these performances and also adults who are disabled. So that's what the, that... So that's what the, that the organization does in exchange for these funds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for floor amendment number seven to committee substitute R-18-24. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no.
Yes.
That carries on a six to three vote. Okay, we are now under floor amendment number eight.
Mr. President, can we clarify the vote on that last amendment?
Okay, let's go back to floor amendment number seven. Those in favor signify by saying yes. Counselor Benton?
Yes.
That carries on a six to three vote. Okay, in our packets, we are now on I, which is floor amendment number eight. Counselor Peña and Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to try to adjust this, Ms. Yara, the best I can, so unless you want me to direct it to you. Okay.
So, Mr. President, Counselor Peña, you requested earlier to add the Recuerdos Azar Chavez program to this amendment. If we do that for $20,000, line one would read on page three, line three entitled "Community Events Increase the Amount by $52,000."
So that would include the $20,000 that was discussed earlier, correct? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions? All those in favor of floor amendment number eight to committee substitute R-18-24 signify by saying yes and raise your hand. Yes? Those opposed? That carries, Counselor Benton?
No.
That carries on a six to three vote. We've already voted on item G in the packet, which was floor amendment number one. We are now on item, let's go to item L, and then we will come back to item K.
Yeah, Mr. President, these items K and L kind of conflict a little bit, and I think L would have to be voted for first and then K, or else it would be tricky. But anyway, I'll have Ms. Yara explain.
Ms. Yara, go and proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, counselors, amendments K and L are somewhat competing. K includes the amount of money that would be necessary for paramedic firefighter targeted wage increases. Amendment L would include that, but as well would include another 2.5 percent for firefighter cost of living increase. So that's the main differences. On amendment L, if amendment K were to pass, we would strike lines number one and number six would be changed to amount of $553,000 on amendment L. So depending on how the council moves these and approves or disapproves them, I can correct that as needed.
Okay, let's go and proceed. Let's go ahead and go to Counsel Vice President Harris, and that would be L.
Yes, I think that-
That would be floor amendment number nine, correct?
I think so. And then I think if we, I think Counselor Jones's amendment, if it passes, would actually be cleaner amendment to this, at that point, perhaps. Or would it work either way?
Yes, Mr. President, Counselor Harris, if item L were to pass, item K would not be needed, I'm sorry, amendment K would not be needed if L is to pass in its entirety.
Okay, then K would not even be necessary? Oh, okay. That's another reason to do it. Okay, I'll move, this is floor amendment number nine.
We have a motion and a second to floor amendment number nine to committee substitute R-18-27, or 24, excuse me.
And, Counselors, this is, as stated, this provides some money for raises and retentions of firefighters, and we had to take it from a lot of different places. And instead of me explaining it, Ms. Yara, could you explain how this works functionally?
Ms. Yara.
Yes, Mr. President, counselors, this amendment would decrease, again, the risk recovery amount in APD by $736,000. And it would decrease the allocation for the fire department's BLS-CMS vehicles and equipment by $932,000. That money, of course, would then be used to create a reserve for paramedic firefighter increases and then provide another 2.5 percent cost of living increase for fire union employees. The equipment that the fire department needs to initiate those programs can be paid from existing CIP funds.
Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Yara, can you explain the difference between K and L, so everybody understands?
Yes, Mr. President, Counselor Winter, the difference between K and L is that L includes 2.5 percent cost of living increase for firefighters. As proposed and in the committee substitute, there is actually funding of only 0.5 percent. If you remember, the council had approved a 1.5 percent cost of living increase for firefighters last month. And so the way the committee sub stands now, firefighters would get a 2 percent increase in their wages.
Okay, so Ms. Yara, just for clarification, so this is 2 percent above what was in the committee substitute?
2.5 percent above.
2.5 percent, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Vice President Harris.
Yes, I'd like Chief Dow to come up, please, and get some feedback. Thank you, Chief. It looks like you have a deputy or assistant chief with you.
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Harris. Yes, I have deputy chief Emily Harmiel with me.
Oh, no, right next to you. Any case, Chief, tell us how this amendment affects or addresses public safety issues in particular crime.
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Harris. Crime in Albuquerque obviously has risen over the years. There's a, is there feedback?
Excuse me, Counselor Benton?
Counselor-
Counselor Benton is out of order.
The chief is speaking, Counselor Benton, and then I will go to you. Go and proceed, Chief.
All right. Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Harris. So from 2013 to 2017, obviously, there's been an increase in crime in the city of Albuquerque. I don't know the exact number, but I can tell you that it does correlate with our call volume. Our call volume has increased over 32 percent since then. We ran 81,000 calls in 2013, and we're running 107,000 plus as it relates right now. Basically, you would take a number of calls that we have that relate to crime. In 2013 to 2017, we're seeing a significant increase in those calls. So for example, for assaults, we're seeing a 50 percent increase in that same period of time. Overdoses have gone from 8,800 to 11,186. That's basically six more overdoses every day in the city of Albuquerque. We issue 516 doses of Narcan every year. For suicides and psych calls that we have, there's a 2,494 annual increase. Stabbings and shootings in the city of Albuquerque have gone from 373 in 2013 to 638 in 2017, 265 more. Vehicle fires in the city of Albuquerque, which many of those are attributed to arson as well, that's one more every five days. We have 374 vehicle fires. So as APD responds to an increase in crime, so does the Albuquerque Fire Department. Basically, we're responding to all those same calls that they're responding to, especially when the public is injured. We, like it's been said before, AFD responds to more calls per firefighter than any other fire department in the country right now. It was 216 calls per firefighter that we responded to. That's more than FDNY, that's more than Las Vegas, that's more than Phoenix, Denver. And all this data was gathered through publications and also, you know, report, one of our retired battalion chiefs published in his National Fire Academy paperwork through the Executive Fire Officer Program. We're actually on pace right now to run over 220 calls per firefighter. What this also means is it's affecting our response time. So just like many of you have seen today, I sent out those monthly reports to you, and it has a heat map on there, and it shows where the majority of our calls actually are. And in that same monthly report, it shows those call volume and how it's increasing. So basically, the only way to improve our response times is either add more apparatus or we decrease the number of calls. And that's difficult to do, is to decrease those calls, although we're trying to work on public education and other ways to do that. But the issue is that we, excuse me, we still need more apparatus. And that's where those BLS trucks actually on Central are going to play a big role for us. The proactive way that we can approach that is through our community EMS program, and that's where we can reach common callers and identify those issues that they're having and get them the right resources that they need.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, you said that a major part of this is your ALS/BLS vehicles and what you're doing. And yet, in order to fund this amount, there is suggesting that the sources of funding are the removal of $932,000 for ALS/BLS vehicles. How does that make sense?
Counsel President Sanchez and Counselor Jones, I understand what you're saying with that. We are going to use impact fees for two of those vehicles. That's the community EMS vehicles. They're basically SUVs that our members are going to drive around and identify those common callers and go to their homes for visits. We don't have the staffing right now, and that plays another role into recruitment and retention. So right now, we have a BLS truck that we can get started July 1st, and we will put that at Station 11 in Counsel Davis's district. And that's the hottest spot in the city of Albuquerque, Central and San Mateo area. That truck will start rolling out. I don't have the staffing, though, to man those trucks. So that goes back to us trying to, you know, build up our recruitment efforts to get people to want to work for the Albuquerque Fire Department. That's where the raises actually play a role in that and to help us to do that, where we can recruit existing paramedics in the state of New Mexico, hopefully in a lateral class this fall. And then I can actually have another BLS truck on the road later on in January, again, using some reserve apparatus, and then we can push forward with another BLS truck towards the end of FY '19. So I just don't, if you had the trucks right now, I couldn't staff them. So that's why we're looking into a phasing in process.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Chief Dow. That helps. So another question, obviously, this isn't just for your paramedics. Can you tell me, or maybe Ms. Nyir can tell me, what is the total amount percentage of AFD wage increases over the last year or two years? And if, and let me tack onto that, does that include, exclude the currently negotiated contract that we don't know about? And if so, what will that add on percentage-wise?
Ms. Nyir.
Thank you, Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Jones. I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to Chief Dow.
Thank you.
So toward the end of last month, I believe, the council passed a restoration package that added 1.5 percent across the board to the fire salaries. That was funded out of non-recurring funds. And so when we looked at this budget, we looked at having to sort of firm that up using the kind of recurring funds that we usually use for wages. That 1.5 percent belonged to things that happened before our administration, but basically a 3 percent raise that I think was part of some previous negotiations, and that's where I can turn it over to the chief for details. This year, so then we would have a 3 percent increase this year because we have to make that 1.5 percent sort of firm with recurring funds to the question that Counselor Winter asked and that Stephanie answered. And then, then in addition to that, you have the 0.5 plus the 2.5 we're requesting here.
Chief Dow.
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Jones, can you let me know exactly what you were looking for?
Exactly. I'll tell you exactly what I want.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief Dow, thank you for asking. How much is the total pay raise for AFD on a percentage basis over the last year and a half to two years? And if I can add up what Ms. Nyir said, I can probably help you. And it's approximately 5.5 percent.
5.5 percent over how many years?
One and a half or two. I'm not sure which.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it close?
I don't have the information with me. I apologize. I can get that information for you, though.
Ms. Nyir, am I close on that?
I think you are, but I'm going to also just turn back and give my budget folks a chance to firm that up. Apologies, we just weren't here for that part.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Merrill.
Mr. President and Counselor Jones, I believe it was a 2.5 percent across the board in fiscal year '17. And year-to-date in '18, that would be 3 percent. And this amendment would propose or bring it up to an additional 3 percent for '19.
Oh, gosh, that means 8.5 percent. Thank you.
I believe so.
Thank you. And then, 8.5 to 9 percent. And then additionally, Chief Dow, you said that you're planning on in this proposal to replace your ALS/BLS issue needed out of impact fees? If I remember the time that I dealt with impact fees, which has been a few years and I might have forgotten, those are growth-related. If this is a new program, how is, can those be considered growth-related?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Jones, the community EMS is a new program.
But that doesn't mean that there's a growth in the city or growth in homes, does it? That's what, that's what impact fees are for.
Yes, ma'am.
Which one?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Jones, that's my understanding that we were going to use that money for those two vehicles.
Then maybe I better ask the COO. Mr. COO, it's my understanding that impact fees were designated for and are to be used for growth-related issues, which is why they are charged to developers who build something new and cause a new use for these. How can a new program be considered, not necessarily because of growth, but a new program be considered a growth-related issue and therefore be able to be used on impact, with impact fees?
Mr. President and Counselor Jones, you're, you are correct. The impact fees are used and are paid by developers as they build in the city. Part of the impact fees, as you know, are apportioned out for different purposes, to include fire and fire protection. I think the proposal here is to look at the impact fees as they come into the course of the year, to look at how you use those impact fees to potentially purchase equipment that may not be funded under the budget process, but that is contingent upon having growth in the community and having the growth in the building sector, if you will.
Counselor Jones.
Not quite where I want to go, but I'll get back to it as other people have a chance to talk. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Counsel Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm concerned about the risk fund for fire. We, so far, we've already taken $160,000, added to that another $590,000, and this calls for $736,000 of your risk fund to help fund this. And that's, when you add that together, that's over half of what's in the fund right now. We've, I've been on council long enough to see that bad things happen. And bad things only get worse when there's not very much money. And to take 50 percent of the total in the risk fund, I think, is rather dangerous. I think that's a little too bold. So I probably won't be supporting this, this particular amendment. Thank you.
Counsel Davis.
Just a question for Chief Dow. One of the things that people believe, and actually, I believed this for a while, but some people have told me that it might not be true, which is that we really have no issues with retention and recruitment in the Albuquerque Fire Department, so we're just blowing money and just giving it away. Is that true? Do we have issues?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Harris, we do have problems with recruitment and retention. Right now, we're not paying our members competitive to come into the Albuquerque Fire Department. Actually, we start out at $28,000, and we don't even compete in our own backyard. So we can't compete with Rio Rancho Fire, we can't compete with Burnley County Fire, all of those departments in the metro area. Burnley County starts out at about $42,000, Farmington's at 38, Los Alamos beats everybody at $45,000, Rio Rancho's at 37, Santa Fe's at $49,000, Santa Fe County's at $41,000. So we start out at $28,000 a year for our new recruits. If you look on a national scale, even just to stay in the southwest, Denver starts out at $52,000, tops out at $85,000. Las Vegas starts- Las Vegas starts out at $45,000, tops out at 73. And again, Los Alamos, $45,000 to $69,000 is their top end right there. We simply just cannot compete. And the numbers from the city HR also show that we're having a drop in the number of people that are applying for the Albuquerque Fire Department. So, in the 1990s, the early 2000s, we would have, you know, almost 1,000 people, 800 people applying for the Albuquerque Fire Department. In 2010, that dropped to 230 applicants. 2018, for this year's process, we started out with 98 applicants. We lost eight people to Burnley County Fire Department just in the process alone. We're an ISO-1 department, Class 1 department, which means we are one of the best fire departments in the country. There's about 100 departments in the country that are ISO-1, and yet, we lost people applying for our department to a local department just next door because we cannot pay them what the other department is paying them. So, yes, we have a problem with recruiting members as well. So, roughly $10,000 to $17,000 less from other places. As far as retaining those employees, once we have, have trained them and put a lot of investment into those employees, when you look at those numbers, we're still losing members to other departments as well, especially in the Southwest. We do an incredible job training the employees, but to hold on to them is something that we want to do, especially our paramedics. Paramedic certification is something that's very coveted in the fire service. Every fire department's competing for paramedics. The training itself takes about a year. What I tried to tell people, and in fact, I was telling a couple of the directors today, if you have a cardiac arrest and someone has a cardiac arrest right now on the, on the floor here or at UNM Hospital, you're getting roughly the same care. We have a life pack on all of our rescues that's worth about $25,000, and the same drug they're going to use and the same procedures they're going to use is the same thing the doctor's going to use. When people say paramedics, it's not just someone takes a blood pressure and, and maybe gives an oral medication, it's somebody that does very advanced life support for, for our citizens, and they do an excellent job at that as well. And I want to retain as many of them as I possibly can.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Davis, and then Counselor Gibson?
I just want to follow, thank you, Mr. President. I won't belay this, I promise. I just want to follow and say, I understand, I hear the concern about impact fees, but growth is not necessarily just on the sprawl on the edges, Chief, if I understand. I mean, we've invested a lot in Central, we've seen calls for service in the city on Central Avenue double, at least on the police side, I know, more than double other areas of the city in the last six years or so, the last time I saw data. Excuse me, and we've seen parts of Southeast and Central Avenue where has long since been sort of abandoned is now being revitalized and seeing growth. I mean, it seems to me that the calls for service are corresponding to the growth in the city and that those developers are paying those fees as well. So, I don't have an issue with us using impact fees for that. I think it grows, it grows with the city, and I think our calls for service justify it. Just remind me very quickly, we have spent a lot of time, and we all know, everybody in Albuquerque knows the stats and where we are on the list for calls for service, but I remember and have been out on enough ride-alongs to know that about half, it seems like, of the police calls we have end up as an AFD call as well, whether it's a down-and-out, some type of assault, takes a paramedic, it takes, which is what they get, takes a rescue unit, a transport unit. Often, that means an engine with some extra backup because some they're closer. How many of our police calls roughly, if you know, require fire service as well? I mean, there's a lot.
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Davis, that's a tough question to answer, actually, but if you go back to the five calls that I was talking about earlier, it's 28% of the AFD calls are roughly crime-related.
Okay.
If that's what you're, what you're looking for.
I think that is, yes, sir.
Assaults, overdoses, psych, suicide, stabbing, shootings, and what we call arson vehicle fires.
And to follow your paramedic question, I may have missed it in that conversation, but ballpark, I mean, you have to take a person out of service for a whole year to do training, most of it, anyway. Ballpark, what is it costing us now to train a firefighter to become a paramedic? How much is the city taxpayers investing in that only to lose them to somewhere else down the road?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Davis, that's a, that's a good question. Actually, we have to take that person out of the field for an entire year.
And replace them.
So, we have to backfill them, and that's backfilled with overtime. We have a minimum staffing of 164 firefighters. We can't afford to just have some, you know, run a engine or rescue short. Then we have to pay for the actual instructors to, to train them, and then we have to pay UNM. So, you're looking at about $100,000 per paramedic, and that's a one-year training. And to see them go to some other department is, is not something that, that I want to see, and I know that the council doesn't want to see either.
Thanks.
Counselor Gibson, and then Counselor Jones.
So, Chief, you were talking about recruiting and, and hanging on to, to new recruits. Can you tell me, how many people, how many firefighters are we funding with this budget? So, if I was trying to look it up, do you have quite enough time?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Gibson, so as of today, we have, we're funded for 685 firefighters. We have 622 firefighters right now in the Albuquerque Fire Department. We have a cadet class that has, basically, they're going to graduate hopefully about 30 firefighters on June 15th. So, that leaves us 33 short, basically. 15 paramedics short, 18 suppression personnel short. If this FY 19 budget goes through, that's 19 new positions, 13 paramedics, and six suppression positions. It's roughly 52 positions short, 28 of those being paramedics and 24 of those being suppression personnel. So, by this pay package itself is a way to, for us to recruit other firefighters to come into the Albuquerque Fire Department. Like I said before, we have a lateral class that we worked on today with city HR. We're hoping to get this lateral class up and running starting the end of August. We're actually hoping for 40 firefighters to come in on a lateral class, as many paramedics as we can possibly get. Just like Counselor Davis talked about it, the cost to train a paramedic, $100,000. I can hire a paramedic, and it's a lot cheaper than that. So, I can bring them in, and I'm hopeful that I can fill that entire 40-person cadet class for a lateral class 12 weeks long. And we've been getting the word out as well, and a number of people are contacting us, and that would make a, a big improvement for our department and fill our staffing, which is, which is short right now.
Right. And this other, this other amendment also does take care of that as well.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the reason I ask you that, so the vacancy rate is going to be, whatever, 33 over 685? Is that?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Gibson, yes, ma'am, that's correct. 685 is the total, and we are 33 short after the 90th cadet class graduates.
Okay. So, what is the maximum, what is the maximum number that you can actually hire with, with today's funding right now?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Gibson, we, we would like to hire 40 in this, this next class. That 40 is the max that we can teach at our academy.
Okay, well, and you have 685 right now? So, and we are funding at how many? Do you recall?
We are funded today at 685. If FY 19's budget goes in, that's 19 new positions. That puts us at 704.
All right. So, that would be creation of new, new positions. But don't you have to leave a percentage for, I can't, is that vacancy rate?
Vacancy savings?
Vacancy savings? Isn't there a, a number under the 685 that you can't really go across?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Gibson, it's 1.5% is what that vacancy savings rate is.
That's pretty low. Great. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, you're a good sport. Thank you. So, one of the things I want to point out, and I think this is true, so I'll ask, the cadet class does not get this 8.5% increase, is that correct? That pay, they don't, they don't get the same wages as the firefighter, the union, people under the contract and the union negotiating or the collective bargaining amount. They're not included in that, is that correct?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Jones, that is correct. We just have a, a flat line for the entry-level firefighters at $28,000. And again, that's something that we're working on to change that so that we can bring more people into the Albuquerque Fire Department.
And then, one more question, Chief, and I'll, I'll stop pestering you. Do you think that if you were given an appropriation for $370,000, $379,000 to train your new cadets to be paramedics, that that would help you recruit people?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Jones, yes, ma'am, that, all of that is going to help in our recruiting efforts. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief, and that's, that's a number-one priority for the city, as I understand, in our new method of responding to, to calls.
Yes, ma'am.
Is having paramedics. Two per, per vehicle?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Jones, yes, ma'am, two paramedics on every rescue apparatus that we have, and then Engine 10 is also an ALS engine. The driver is a paramedic.
So, it would probably behoove us to have as many trained paramedics as we could get?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. That was the right answer. Thank you, Chief Dow.
Thank you, Chief. We are on floor Amendment Number 9 to Committee Substitute R-18-24. All those in favor of Amendment Number 9, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed?
No.
That carries, have, raise your hands again, all those in favor, say yes. That's a 5 to 4 vote. That passes that amendment. Okay, we are back on the bill. Are there any questions regarding the committee substitute?
Could I ask the committee a question, please?
No, you may not.
I just want to know, the comment going to be?
You may not. We've already completed public comments, so you need to please take a seat. Thank you.
I have a question for staff and also the public regarding the, we've not talked about public safety. And we increased taxes by 3/8 of a cent, which will go into effect on July 1st. In the bill that we passed, the ordinance, we stated that a minimum of 60% would go towards public safety. I'd like to ask the administration, what is that percentage now in the current bill that we are looking at of the money that will go towards public safety?
Mr. Romero?
Mr. President, I wasn't running a tally here, but based on what I knew earlier today, assuming these amendments did pass, I believe it drops it from 80% to 70%, 77% as calculated by the administration and the Budget Office.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. And does that 80% include the social programs that we just discussed this evening?
Mr. President and Counselor Jones, yes, it does.
So, for some of us, social programs such as that may not be interpreted as, you don't have to answer, I'm sorry, I'm making a statement, may not be interpreted as public safety, perhaps. Thank you.
And I would just like to say, with all the different meetings that I've attended, I think the biggest concern to the public is public safety in our community. And I have the utmost, the utmost faith in Chief Guyer and the administration in this council that we will increase the number of police officers, and I think we have no other choice but to increase the number of police officers. That is, I think, the biggest challenge that we are facing. And I would hope that at each council meeting, or that we get a report back from Chief Guyer and the administration on looking at how those numbers are looking. Because we budgeted for 1,040 officers, I know that it's going to be extremely difficult to attain that number of this coming fiscal year, but I believe that the public is demanding that we increase those numbers. And I think it's going to be paramount that the most important issue that we are facing in our city today is public safety. Because if we have a safe city, we will have a prosperous city. But I want to work closely with the administration, I want to work very closely with this council and the Police Department to assure that we increase numbers. I really feel bad for the rank and file that are out on the streets each and every day fighting crime. I know that there are many times when people call 911, and it's a priority, call 1, and they're, they're holding for, you know, 30, 40, 50 minutes. When someone calls 911, that should be an immediate response. So, let's continue to work together. I want assurances that we are going to make those numbers, and the public will know that the numbers will be increasing. But I think it needs to be discussed at each and every council meeting that we are working towards those goals and that 1,040 officers and even more, because I believe the mayor, this council is looking at 1,200 officers as the ultimate number in the next two to three years, but I think it needs to be done sooner than later.
Counselor Borrego?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I think that, you know, when I look at APD and I look at, at fire, I, I see public safety. I mean, I glaringly see public safety. And I, my father was a firefighter for 30 years, so I grew up in that, in, sort of in that business in a, in a sense. And, you know, tonight, I'm also on the AMAFCA board, and tonight, we lost some lives. I was waiting for confirmation on a second person that they were still trying to fish out of the Rio Grande. And, you know, just, it, when I think about public safety, I mean, today, we had a storm that we've been waiting for, for two years, I mean, two months. And, you know, it's not, it's really, you think about the firefighters, we've had such drought conditions, and, you know, you think about kind of where we're going, and, you know, our, our, our climate is changing, and we are becoming more of a, of a situation that is going to require emergency personnel. And we have to accept that, and we have to understand that, and we have to fund for that. And I think that we need to think about, you know, also our security officers. I mean, we have situations arising nationally that we've never seen in our lifetimes. And so, I think that, you know, at our last meeting, I, we talked to the chief, he came forward for APD, and we asked him about, you know, what are the benchmarks going to be for us? Because we do have to be accountable, and we do have to be transparent to the public. Tonight, we were voting on, on issues that will increase public safety. Awareness, recruitment, retention. I mean, how do we keep those people in our community? And what are we offering them in order to risk their lives every day out there to, to, to stay in our community in Albuquerque? Because we are competing. We're competing with Denver, we're competing, competing with Phoenix, with Austin, with places around the country that are facing similar issues as us, but they don't have the drought issues that we have. So, I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, we really need to ensure and to the administration that those benchmarks are in place and that we see that little lever move, that little dial, that, you know, that, that, it has to, we have to show success. And we have to ensure to the public that we're going to show them that success. And part of, you know, keeping, you know, having retention and, and, and offering these individuals a reason to stay in our community, we have to offer them competitive wages. And so, I think it's imperative that we think in terms, right now, of public safety, and that's Counselor Harris, like, that's why I asked about the Nutcrack, the Nutcracker, with all due respect. I mean, we really need to look at programs that are going to ensure that over the next couple of years, our crime rates are going to come down, and our drought situation probably won't get better, but at least we can deal with it. So, anyway, thank you, and I, and I really look forward to those benchmarks, to the administration and to the Police Department and to the Fire Department, is how are we going to move those little levers in the next six months or year or so on? Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, I'd like to go to Counselor Jones and Counselor Pena to close. Counselor Pena?
I don't have too much to add, other than I just really want to, you know, I was added at the, at the last minute by Counselor Jones, so I just want to say, you know, I want to congratulate you. You've done a really great job working with everyone on, on this budget, and I appreciate all the work that you've put into it. And to really congratulate the administration on their first budget, it's tough.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, we have approval of Committee Substitute R-24 as amended.
We have a motion, any second, for Committee Substitute R-24 as amended. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Benton?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Benton. A little delayed reaction. Again, I would also like to thank Counselor Jones for all of her work. Putting the budget together takes time, it takes working with the administration. I also want to thank John Zaman, I want to thank Stephanie Yara for all of her work. It's not an easy process. I want to thank Lawrence, I want to thank Sanjay Sunalay and Ms. Nyir for all of your work. I know this is your first budget, and it was a challenging one, but I, most important, I think we all knew that public safety was our number-one priority. I, myself, did not ask for a lot in the budget because my priority this round was public safety, but I think it takes a collaborative effort to, to get things done. I want to thank Mayor Keller for all the work that he put into this budget. I know initially, he was...
I know initially he was concerned about some of the programs that were taken out, but I was glad that we could come to a compromise and work together on, on such important issues, you know, working for our youth and, you know, working for the police department, the firefighters. And let's not forget the rest of the city employees. We've got a lot of great departments to do a tremendous amount of work for the citizens of Albuquerque each and every day, and I want to thank those departments for their work. But again, I'm glad this budget for now is completed. We will have a mid-year markup, hopefully, to bring more police officers to the city of Albuquerque. But again, Counselor Jones, thank you very much for all of your work.
Thank you.
Let's go and move to item F, and then we will take a deliberate. Counselor Benton?
Mr. President?
Yes.
If, if, if I could just briefly, the, without question, it's not just about APD and fire. It's very much about dealing with problems that our friends in, in APD and fire will readily agree.
Thank you.
Our social problems in the community. And I do appreciate the administration's understanding that, that things like dealing with folks who are living on the street for whatever, for whatever their reason, and there are so many. But that has to do with public safety as well. It has to do with the resources that we spend so much money on. So I just want to make that point in support of this, so, thank you, in support of the idea that, that we have a broad understanding of public safety. Thanks.
Thank you. We are now going to go to final actions, and that's going to be R-36. Counselor Benton, that is your bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is the consolidated plan, bill, and this was, I sponsored by request, and we should probably hear from the department.
Okay, let's go and hear from the department, but let's go and invite members of the public that are signed up to speak on this bill first. We have Valerie Trujillo, Shelley Rep, Connie Chavas, Linda Bridge, and Robbie N., Robbie N. Mohammed. And once your name has been called, come to the front and be prepared to speak.
Good evening, President Sanchez and council members. I'm here to urge your approval of the two thou, twenty thousand eighteen to twenty thousand twenty-two five-year consolidated plan. That's item R-1836 on your agenda. I've been a citizen of Albuquerque for over twenty years, and this is the first time I've come before the council. So you know how important I feel this item is. As a beginning here, I'd like you to know I have no financial or business interest in this, in this plan. I'm here because I'm a community volunteer who's committed to children and families. First, let me say that I'm very impressed with the thoroughness, quality, and comprehensive nature of the three hundred and sixty-eight-page, five-year plan. I read it, all three hundred and sixty-eight pages. I want you to know that there's really four main things that impress me. One, the community input component is incredible. There were focus groups, public meetings, hearings, surveys, newspaper announcements, and even Twitter was involved in getting this input. There is a clear use of data from the American Community Survey, HUD housing data, and economic data from our community. And three, there are efforts to make changes in existing practices and priorities based on this community input, evaluative data, and previous progress. Finally, there's coordination among a variety of government agencies, and nonprofits are very evident as well. This includes the Justice Department agreement. So I am very much in favor of this and hope you will be too. And I urge you to support the INCA apartment amendment as well.
Thank you. Shelley Rep?
President Sanchez, members of the council, thank you so much for having me here today. I'm the executive director of the New Mexico Dream Center here in Albuquerque, and I also urge support for this, this bill. We are facing a hidden crisis here in Albuquerque, a crisis of homeless teens who cannot access services. Our last stats show that there are six thousand homeless teens in Albuquerque through New Day Youth and Family Services. With that, homeless teens are extremely vulnerable to human trafficking due to the barriers of services and lack of services with our youth, with our shelters, and other available services. The New Mexico Dream Center plans to address this in a large way through a drop-in center that would be open for homeless youth over the midnight hours, essentially. Last time, when I spoke to the committee on this, I told the story of one of our clients that was trafficked as a teenager off of Central and Wyoming. I have another client, in fact, who was trafficked when she was twelve years old from that same intersection. She had run away from home because there was no food in the home. Her mother was an addict, and her father was never part of the picture. So she ran away, and she could not find services, and she didn't know what to do, and ended up at the intersection of Central and Wyoming. While she was there, somebody offered to buy food for her and take her to a safe place. That person took her and did rape her, and then kept her as a sex slave for two years. She was finally able to get free through law enforcement when she was thirteen years old. She's now sixteen and is still homeless, and we are providing services to her right now. Having a drop-in center will allow a no-barrier resource for our teens, a way for them to come and start to have somebody to help them access, access the services they need so they can reintegrate back into society. When we look at all that is happening in Albuquerque and all of the things, even today, that, as we've listened to the budget and the importance of children, this is a part of the population that we cannot afford to miss. Thank you.
Connie Chavas? Welcome.
Thank you, President Sanchez, members of the city council. My name is Connie Chavas, and I'm the executive director of the Barrett Foundation, a homeless shelter serving women and children, along with four scattered site housing programs. I also urge the support of this bill and the upcoming amendment for the INCA properties. In addition to funding for homeless programs, there is an amendment put forth for twelve additional rental units that we will partner with the Greater Albuquerque Housing Partnership. They will be the developer, and we will be the owner-operator, providing twelve additional, much-needed units for women, children, and families experiencing homelessness in the city of Albuquerque. So we urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I just want to, I just want to say hello to Connie. Connie and I worked very hard together on developing the Sawmill property over many years, and I have a lot of respect for her and her direction, and I know that she's a very good manager. So I think the Barrett House is blessed to have you. Thank you, Connie.
Thank you, Counselor Borrego.
Counselor Pena, you're not quite done yet.
Thank you, Mr. President. Connie, I just want to reiterate what Counselor Borrego said, you know, I think that the woman who spoke before you and the woman who's going to speak after you, these are the crucial programs that we need in our community to help fill that void, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Linda Bridge?
Thank you, President Sanchez, councilors, good evening. I'm Linda Bridge, the executive director of the Albuquerque Housing Authority. The Housing Authority manages the housing programs for low and extremely low-income households. The average income of the households we serve is about eleven thousand a year. And about a half of the households we serve are also elderly or disabled. We own nine hundred and fifty-three units of public housing throughout the city that is over thirty years old. If that housing falls into disrepair and the project-based subsidy is lost, there are no other options for these households. That is why I'm speaking in favor of the consolidated plan and the action plan before you this evening. The two thousand eighteen action plan includes funding for the Housing Authority to do some much-needed accessibility and safety improvements to two of our public housing sites, Wainwright Manor on Gibson and Ambudo Towers on Constitution. Work that'll be completed with this funding includes remodeling twelve-unit interiors to meet uniform federal accessibility standards, completing modifications to hallways, community rooms, and other common areas to meet ADA design standards, including accessible walkways and parking areas, adding much-needed new elevators to the Ambudo property, creating safety measures along handrails, stairways, and guardrails on balconies, making improvements to the fire alarm systems, and adding a fire sprinkling system at the Wainwright Manor. These improvements at these two properties will improve accessibility and safety and livability for these low-income senior and disabled residents, which is over a hundred and sixty households. I want to acknowledge the time staff took during this planning process to listen to the needs, our needs and needs of our residents. We appreciate and support that the need for funding to preserve public housing is reflected as a priority in the consolidated plan. We look forward to a continued partnership with the city to invest in this most-needed housing. Additionally, I encourage the city to prioritize funding for development efforts citywide that preserve existing affordable rental housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bridge. And the last speaker is Robbie N. Mohammed.
Good evening, President Sanchez and councilmen and women, thank you for the opportunity this evening. I'm here on behalf of Homewise, I am one of the home purchase advisors with Homewise. I have been working with them for the past two and a half years. And I also, too, have had the honor of working with Ms. Connie Chavas, who was my mentor, and I worked for the Sawmill Community Land Trust for nine years. My role is helping our community members become successful homeowners. And Homewise does that with emphasis on counseling and education. So many of these funds that are going to be coming through with, with this plan is going to help bridge the gap for many of our low-to-moderate-income households in this community who might not see themselves as being in that realm of homeownership. This will give them the opportunity to do that. In addition to that, many of these funds will also help to stabilize our neighborhoods by getting a lot of these dilapidated homes back into operation and functioning for, hopefully, one of our members of our community to become a homeowner. So I definitely encourage you to support this effort and allow for these funds to come through for the next five-year plan to help many of these people in our community become homeowners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes public comment on R-36.
Mr. President?
Counselor Davis?
Mr. Enrique Cardell mentioned that he had signed up for this item, is he not, did we miss him?
Mr. President?
Counselor Benton?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't see that he was speaking.
Mr. President, Mr. Cardell mentioned.
We can come up and say a few words.
Go on, proceed. President Sanchez, thank you, Counselor Davis, esteemed councilors. I'm here, speaking in favor of this specifically because it provides some infrastructure improvement to the Trumbull neighborhood. Trumbull neighborhood is the most densely populated census tract in New Mexico, and it's sorely lacking in infrastructure. The second-most populated census tract is just north La Mesa neighborhood, Fair West, South San Pedro, fall in the high, top ten, fifteen census tracts. So this is the most densely populated part of the city and very sorely behind in infrastructure improvements. So that's why I came to speak in favor of this. It has to be in general comments and somehow, and then was moved and somehow got bumped off altogether. Other things I wanted to talk about in general comments was, I was asked as a member of the International District Health Communities Coalition to pull together a meeting at the Ed Romero Terrace Apartments. And so there are some letters here for Mayor Keller and Counselor Davis asking for a crossing light at Central and Texas. And these are for the Counselor Davis. And also, last week, International District Health Communities Coalition went out to do a organized needle pickup in the community, and in ninety minutes, we picked up five hundred and six needles. And my understanding is it cost the city seventy dollars to send a unit to go pick up a needle right now, so we saved the city thirty-five thousand four hundred and twenty dollars in ninety minutes. And we're going to continue to do that, and we would like to partner with the city, not just for the infrastructures of the International District, but for this public health work. Because public safety is more than law enforcement, expecting.
Thank you, your time has expired. Appreciate it. Okay, that concludes public comments, and we are back on the bill. Counselor Benton, you have an amendment?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I don't think I moved the bill, so I've moved the bill.
We have a motion, any second, by Council Vice President Harris. Counselor Benton?
And I, Mr. President, thank you, I will move the, the amendment that's, that was in the packet.
Ms. Yara?
Yes, Mr. President, unfortunately, the other amendment that's on the dais has to be moved before Counselor Benton's because it changes some of the, the whole plan, first of all, and then he's making another amendment to it, so.
Okay, let's go and move, do you want to read that into the record, Ms. Yara? This would be amendment number one?
Yes, so this would be sponsored by Counselor Jones, would be amendment one.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President, this is floor amendment number one to R-1836. On page two, line sixteen, delete three million nine seventy-three five sixty-nine and replace with four million four sixty oh eight one. And if, if you don't mind, I will just give you the explanation instead of reading every one of them, because it's just a cleanup.
Go on, proceed.
This is a number of minor technical corrections to some sentence structures and grammar, and these have been added, plus the number changes just to clean it up with what our current funding is, funding is. I'd like to move approval.
We have a motion, any second, for floor amendment number one to R-18-36. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no, that carries. Counselor Benton, floor amendment number two?
I'm not sure I have the floor amendment number two, but I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Yara, do you want to explain that real quick?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I got a wing this year. So, on, on page two seventy-nine, this would delete the description of the guidelines and would replace it with the following. "A description of the guidelines that will be used for resale or recapture of home funds when used for homebuyer activities as required in ninety-two point two five four as follows." "The purpose of this section is to provide the recapture and resale policies of the participating jurisdiction and its subrecipients. Home requires that these PJ's utilize capture resale provisions to ensure continued affordability for low-to-moderate-income homeowners and as a benefit to the public through the wise stewardship of federal funds." And it, sorry, it goes on to describe the recapture policy and procedure.
Thank you, Ms. Yara. Counselor Borrego?
Counselor Benton, would you consider a friendly amendment to define PJ? Because it just says PJ throughout the document.
Counselor Benton?
Counselor Benton?
I, I would have to defer to staff on that, I, I'm not reading it unfortunately right now.
Ms. Yara?
Yes, Mr. President and councilors, the amendment does refer to PJ and does not define it as a participating jurisdiction, so we can certainly add that language to its first instance.
I would move a friendly amendment to define PJ.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, any second, to define PJ. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, that carries. Counselor Benton, to close, on floor amendment number two, as amended.
So, Mr. President, just, just quickly, we had good discussions with the Department of Family and Community Services on this, and, you know, looking back over to the history of, of what we've done in the city, we've had a broad range of affordable housing options. And this is one of them, it's important. We've got some good providers in the community who are prepared to take advantage of this. Appreciate everyone's work on the whole project and the entire plan, and urge your support of the amendment and then the plan.
Ms. Nayer?
Thank you, Council President Sanchez. We appreciate the, the overall support for the plan, we think it's a good one. I just wanted to draw your attention to, in this amendment number two, page two, the very top paragraph. It's, it's a little bit obscure, but this recapture piece is talking about the amount of money that's returned if someone has received down payment assistance. assistance, that's what the DPA stands for, and then they're able to turn around and sell their house. In addition to returning the original down payment, which I think we all agree is a great idea, this amendment proposes returning 10% of earned equity. And we just have had some concerns from folks in the Family and Community Services Department that if part of the goal of this project is to help people accumulate wealth and grow, you know, grow their wealth over time by investing in housing, then taking back part of their equity doesn't seem to quite square with those goals. So while we support the return of the down payment assistance, which I think was in, in the original plan, um, we do have some concerns about the return of some portion of equity.
So what would be your recommendation? What would you like seen done?
Uh, Council President Sanchez, um, we would suggest, well, I would defer to, to your technical experts on the, the wordsmithing, but it is that line sort of at the top of page two that has to do with, um, plus 10% of the $50,000 in earned equity and wherever that appears throughout the amendment.
Ms. Yara?
And wherever that appears throughout the amendment.
Uh, Mr. President, sorry, I'm not sure why you're asking me.
And wherever that appears throughout the amendment.
Ms. Nair?
Sorry about this, Stephanie. Um, Council President Sanchez, I think, um, what, what we are saying is that we would be more supportive of an amendment that did not require the return of 10% of earned equity in addition to the return of the original down payment. I'm not exactly sure how to precisely cut that because we're, we're just seeing this, but that's the concept.
Okay, Mr. President, I think Counselor Benton would have to weigh in on that change if he was on, if he was listening.
Counselor Benton?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we had a technical problem there, so I didn't hear much of that.
Oh, um, uh, Mr. President, uh...
I defer to the council, I defer to the council's judgment on this. Uh, this is, uh, a question of the, uh, schedule that, that is required by HUD, so I think we need to have staff just weigh in on that, and I defer the decision of the council.
Yeah, so, yeah, sorry, Mr. President and Counselor Benton, the, the request from the administration was to remove language that refers to, uh, returning...
Steph, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay, sorry. Um, so the, the administration requested that we remove the language that refers to the 10% of the earned equity throughout the amendment. And it, I, I don't know what the will of council is, so.
That would be floor amendment number one to amendment number two, and I'll move that. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Borrego? Counselor Penya, and then Counselor Gibson?
So I'm a little clear, Ms. Yara, so it seems as though as, if we remove that, it kind of kills the entire amendment.
Um, Mr. President and Counselor Penya, um, that was the point of the 10% was to actually, um, increase the fund, um, in order to be able to continue to provide, um, this, uh, type of assistance, uh, and increase the, um, the number of citizens who'd be able to be assisted. So the 10%, uh, the reason for the 10% the equity was to actually, to, um, make sure that the fund is replenished. So you are correct.
Counselor Borrego, then Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate that. Um, so, so you're just trying to add the amendment to increase, with the equity, to increase the fund? So in, in essence, removing that line would, would kill the amendment, so, okay, so I can't support the amendment. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Chair, I would like to withdraw my second on that. I, I think, I, I see, it would, it's, it's designed to be a self-sustaining fund, and if we, if we move this amendment, then we're basically gutting this program, is what we're doing.
Sorry. Mr. President, Counselor, it's actually the reverse. So this amendment, what it would do, um, is actually put in the language that is not in the plan right now, so, um, it, it's actually the opposite of what you said. So the amendment is to restore a former, um, process or, um, uh, a former, uh, method of the subsidy amount to be repaid, um, to the city with an equity share provision that was previously, uh, the process. The consolidated plan removed that, and this is, the amendment would, uh, put that back.
So I'm seeing our attorney shaking his head in the back, and I was... Chris, do you want to...
Ms. Mandrus, do you want to comment?
Clarify this for us?
Mr. President, Counsel, I'm sorry if, uh, sometimes it were my thoughts on my sleeve, and I wasn't meaning to disagree, I was just sort of trying to pay attention. But, but I think, I think there was two amendments that were being discussed, that was the amendment relative to the 10% that would put the money back into the fund to keep it moving. There was a second amendment to that amendment, which is technically not necessary, but the second amendment would sort of reverse that, and so the amendment that's been moved that's on the floor would have the effect of putting the 10% back into the fund.
Okay.
Ms. Nair?
Um, Council President Sanchez, at the risk of making this more confusing, I think Clarissa's, uh, Counselor Penya, excuse me, uh, point was that rather than amending the amendment, you could just vote no to the amendment, and that would have the same effect. So I, I think the administration's point is that either way, the fund gets replenished, it's just talking about how quickly it gets replenished, and the administration doesn't support replenishing the, the fund at the expense of the equity of the homeowners whose lives we're trying to improve.
Okay, let's vote on that amendment. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes? Those opposed? Say no?
No. No.
This is, this is the, this is amendment number, this is amendment number one to amendment number two.
Right.
Correct.
So are we voting on this or the amendment?
The amendment. To that, that is correct.
Mr. President?
Point of order.
Would someone please spell out exactly what we're voting on? Read the language, please.
So, Mr. Pres, Mr. President, Counselor, you have, uh... Sorry, Mr. President, I'm sorry, Nicole. Um, so the vote you were just taking was, uh, the amendment to the amendment that would remove the 10% equity language from, uh, what was intended here, which would make this amendment null, basically. So I would, I would suggest that you withdraw your amendment to the amendment and, and just move the amendment as it is.
Okay, then I will withdraw my motion.
And I withdraw my, withdrew my second.
Okay, we are back now on amendment number two.
Mr. President, to get us back on track, just a point of order, would you just restate the amendment for us? I think it removes that 10%, but I just want to be sure we're on the same page.
That is correct. Basically, what we were discussing was removing the 10%. That is no longer part of the amendment, and we are back on amendment number two to R-36. Are there any questions? See none? All those in favor of amendment number two signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Raise your hand?
Yes.
That carries unanimously? Those opposed? No? Okay, we are back on the bill. Counselor Benton?
I urge your support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for R-36 as amended. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no.
Yes.
That carries unanimously. Uh, we are going to take a dinner break.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Benton, and we will reconvene and go back to the one-year objectives when we come back.